This conference will now be recorded.
Wait, have you recorded executive session?
No, we're in open session right now because then you have to, you've got to open the meeting, yes. Just.
Not a long week.
You have.
Do we have to move to go into executive session if it's labeled one?
Yeah, okay.
Counselor Webb's in the meeting, would you?
I know it's back and forth, but it makes sense to me, and I think we're, I think you're right. That's easier.
I think you're supposed to.
Okay, get this thing rolling. Hi Diana, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Good to see you, in a way, hear you. Uh, okay, so September 19th.
What did he smash?
2024.
His own name.
Session of the Common Council of the City of Port Orford at 5:41, 4:41. So, let's please rise for a quick pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. One nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
He's one of those, uh, what do you call those? It's the one that keeps, keeps your tempo on the piano, goes.
Okay, now I would entertain a quick motion to go into executive session under ORS 192-602D to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry out labor negotiations. And we got a first from Counselor Webb. Gary, one. Okay, so, uh, a call for vote. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Valisis?
Yes.
Counselor Tidy?
Yes.
Counselor Podwitz?
Yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Okay, uh, okay, so we got everybody offline that's not pertinent to the, at least I'd.
Vanessa Crakes.
So, yeah, I don't, uh, what's Vanessa, what is her last?
Diana Moffett, Vanessa Crakes with you.
She is, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
And then we just also want to make sure there are no media present.
No. I'm gonna close.
This conference will now be recorded.
No, you look, just don't look so dang relaxed.
But can we, can we look at the, can we look at the shirts and say how nice the shirts are? Can we talk about this, please? See, very nice, yeah, see?
What is this beautiful?
The shirts that we, that we're all getting are the new stuff that we got, see, look.
All right, yeah.
See, we got the water guys, I got five of them for each of them.
Five of them?
Five for each of them, and then they got, each got these too. And that was paid for by the, paid for by the FSC.
Which shirt is that? Which shirt is that, right by the circle, okay? That new guy, yeah, he's pretty cool. I guess, they're, they're doing things that, yeah. It's a different, um.
What, oh, you're a organist?
Would that be possible to print out?
Yes. I have to make copies for Pat anyway, so.
Thank you, Joseph, how can I help you? What do you need done?
I could make copies.
I just have to make copies of this imprint off the ends thing, and I'll take a bathroom right after the coffee.
All right.
And FYI, I'm back.
Now I gotta go get my stuff out of the car. I thought we'd be done with this a lot sooner. I honestly, I think it was a bunch of, we could, I thought we were trying to put something together. If it was a simple yes or no, we could have probably pulled that off in like three minutes.
We need to mute the microphones.
Microphones are on.
Thank you.
Then we're coming back from recess at 5:42. Okay. Okay, so we're back from recess at 5:42. We missed roll call at the beginning of the meeting, so let the record show that all councilors are present, please. Uh, we did the pledge, and now we're coming out of our executive session, and we are looking for possible action. And I think we have, oh, I'm waiting for Brett. And Diana's still with us, yes?
Yes, uh, Mayor, I am, and while we're waiting for your council member, could I ask you one question?
Absolutely.
I have now reviewed your agenda items, and following this action from the executive session, would you like me to remain in attendance during the remainder of your meeting, or will I be excused?
You will be excused.
Do we have agendas that are for the public? Oh, we have one member who's asked, I don't know if the others would care for one, but is there a sign up sheet back there for?
I can go do it while you're taking notes, you can make it here, I'll go.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so we have a full council present now. Diana?
Thank you, Mayor, this is Diana Moffett, City Attorney, uh, for the City of Port Orford in regards to labor relations. We just concluded an executive session under ORS 192.660-2-2D regarding labor negotiations. We are now on agenda item number three, possible action coming out of that executive session. Therefore, uh, I move that the council, uh, determine whether or not to ratify the tentative agreed to Teamsters Local 206 Successor Collective Bargaining Agreement from July 1 of '23 through June 30 of '26, as proposed to the council by the Teamsters. And, uh, Pat, I can do it, or you can do it, to have all those in favor of ratification say yes, and all those opposed say no.
Go ahead, everyone.
All those in favor of ratifying, say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed to ratifying, say no.
No. Tim, no.
It seems to me that a majority does not want to ratify the proposal, and therefore I will, uh, notify the Teamsters of that, and we will go back to the bargaining table. Counselor Tidy, I did see some, some confusion on your face. Did you understand the vote?
I, I misheard, ma'am, I, I was, I should have went with a negative.
So, let the record reflect then that your vote would be to not ratify. Therefore, it seems to me we have a unanimous decision to not ratify and to go forward and enter back into good faith negotiations with Teamsters.
Thank you both for clarification, I like a unanimous consensus on that. Thank you Diana, wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, good night and be well.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, you have the letter of support?
Oh, I, he said yes.
Oh, no, I, I was just, I.
Oh, the letter you didn't want me to submit? Okay, yeah, so we do have an agenda, the port enacted an emergency resolution on the 17th, so Tuesday, because of dredging, dire concerns, so I shared that letter, I'm sorry about the lateness of it, but the timeline is critical. So hopefully you had time to review it, and maybe we'll add under, uh, well, new business, F?
Oh, the consent calendar.
Yeah, that's what I, I mean, would be, everyone be okay with putting that on the consent calendar?
Yes.
Okay, we'll just move that into the consent calendar then, and save ourselves 10 minutes. I'm sure we'll be out of here by 6:30 or 7:00. Okay, so that's, everybody's good with that by consensus? All right, uh, no other additions, so we move on to presentations, which we have none.
That has not changed, go ahead, Joseph.
Another addition of oaths to office.
Oh, correct, sorry. Was that on the agenda yet?
It was not on the agenda.
Okay, so we have to swear in.
Both of you?
Sounds like it.
Yeah, just to make it official.
Okay.
So.
And that's as confidential employees, is it, wait.
As the administrator and.
Oh, as officers?
Okay, so we're gonna move on to the consent calendar, we have minutes from August 15th, '24. We have an appointment to the planning, Sarah Lovendall, we have an appointment to the Historic Preservation Committee, and Evan Kramer, also a temporary liquor license for the Rotary Pasta Dinner, which is historically pretty standard, and we just added a letter of support for Resolution 2024-3 from the port, who declared an emergency because their dredging got delayed. Just to pre tense of that, the procurement process for the dredging this year got delayed because the bidding went south, and so what would usually be being done right now is looking at maybe best case November, and so we are turning and burning trying to get that, like, in our favor, I should say, or at least getting to the front of the list because of the uniqueness of our port. Uh, so I would entertain a motion to, well, I have one question really quick before I ask. Do, how many people outside of town can be on the Historical Planning Committee?
There's nothing in that provision, I, I looked it up, there's no.
No one doesn't matter.
Oh, not on historic, okay, good deal. So I would entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar.
So moved. Second.
With additions?
Yeah, yeah, with the addition.
I have a minor adjustment to make in the minutes, may I do suggest that? On page six, line 12, at line 212, I would recommend that instead of just saying project proposal, we add water recycling project proposal. And then, we have, page six at the top, oh, line 12, water recycling, water project proposal.
Number six. The. So strike.
No, just add water recycling in front of that project proposal.
Was that the only change, yeah?
I would prefer to change also the word "her" to water recycling proposal in the third thing, because I was the one who typed it up, but it did come about through a discussion that, so it's not just like it was my sole thing. So water recycling added in both of those places.
You would be acting as a part of the council anyway, not a individual.
Yeah, okay, well, if you don't want, I, I, that's just, I didn't want to represent that.
Through the, through the water recycling proposal, perhaps?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Water recycling proposal.
Yep. Exactly.
I have a favor to ask for the minutes. Is it possible, Joseph, when you're preparing the minutes, to perhaps the first time that you use an acronym, put in parentheses what it stands for?
Yes.
That would be great, thank you.
Any other questions on the minutes?
No, they're excellent, I really, I really noticed in particular what a great job was done in synthesizing some long things into very short, good descriptions.
In the minute, that is how we like it.
Lines with the minutes is fabulous too.
Kudos, Joseph.
We, yeah, and the agenda looks great too. I'll say the financials look great when we get to them. Okay, so we have a motion in a second, is that the only changes? And you got those, Joseph? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Tidy?
Yeah.
Counselor Podwitz?
Tim, yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Valisis?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Okay, now we're moving on to citizen concerns, please speak only on agenda items, and you have three minutes. Okay, uh, departmental reports, we'll go ahead and start with administration on page nine.
Okay, did we, where were we gonna put this? The oath of office? We did decide that, so I just.
Let's just get it done.
Okay.
Yeah, let's just.
So, so for part of the admin report will be this oath of office for Joseph and myself to be officers.
Do I read it out and you raise your hands and repeat me, or you just read it out yourself?
You just read it out yourself.
Oh.
No, definitely Pat reads it, and then.
You repeat?
We repeat.
Okay.
It's a long one.
You got a lot of swearing to do.
Okay, I need your right hand raised, please, sir?
Uh, there are two different ones.
Oh, there are?
Oh, boy. That's a resolution, where is it?
Oh, this is my letter.
It'd be in that box.
So who's, is Uli the one that's?
Sorry, everyone. Oh, okay, I like this a lot better.
Was that mine?
Yes, oh, so I just, okay, recorder, so we'll do city administrator first. I, Melissa Radcliffe, do solemnly swear.
I, Melissa Radcliffe, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution and the, and the laws of the United States.
And the, and of state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the charter, bylaws, ordinances, and proclamations.
And the charter, ordinances, and bylaws, and proclamations.
Of the City of Port Orford.
Of the City of Port Orford.
And perform the duties of city administrator.
And perform the duties of city administrator.
In honesty and justice to the best of my ability.
In honesty and justice to the best of my ability.
And that so far as possible.
And that so far as possible.
I will protect that office and this city from any legal, unethical, or dis.
You're gonna have to break that apart.
I will protect that office and this city.
I will protect that office and this city.
From any illegal.
From any illegal.
Unethical.
Unethical.
Or dishonest practices.
Or dishonest practices.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Front and center. All right. Okay, I, Joseph Harrison.
I, Joseph Harrison.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Oregon.
And of the state of Oregon.
And the charter, bylaws, ordinances.
And the charters, bylaws, and ordinances.
And proclamations.
And proclamations.
Of the City of Port Orford.
Of the City of Port Orford.
And perform the duties.
And perform the duties.
Of recorder.
Of recorder.
In honesty and justice.
In honesty and justice.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And that so far as possible.
And that as so far as possible.
I will protect that office and this city from any illegal. I will protect that office and this city.
That I will protect that office and this city.
From any illegal.
From any illegal.
Unethical.
Unethical.
Or dishonest practices.
Or dishonest practices.
And this I promise.
And this I promise.
Under the penalties of perjury.
Under the penalties of perjury.
Yours doesn't say so, help me God.
Mine is a nonreligious.
His is a nonreligious person, so there we go. Yay! Good job, Joseph.
So, can you tell me how many officers of the city we have? So each employee doesn't take that oath.
No.
We have.
The three of us.
And the municipal judge.
And the municipal judge.
If anybody who takes an oath would be an officer of the city. Right? I was just like, as far as our employees go, we have, not all are.
Correct, not all in place.
Thank you, that's all I want.
And I think mine historically has, they've historically done that, but I don't know that it has, says it has to be done in the charter, but as I understand it, it's been historically done, so I stuck with that.
Yeah, it's good to know you guys can get to work.
Now, now we can do something around here.
No more bullshitting. No more fooling around.
Okay, so.
Any questions on the admin or any highlights?
On a question, yeah. The only thing that I will, um, say with, I have two things, to clarify on the contractor water rates. Basically, what we've done is said the contractor water rates will be the same as the commercial rates for people outside of the city, so we tried to do something that was comparable to what we already have, because those rates, the rates we've currently been using are way behind, so we wanted to bring them up with what other people were, um, being charged.
I'm hearing a lot about that.
Correct.
And that is definitely. So, that contractor has a choice, they could go to Bandon, they could go to Langloes. Langloes is probably closer even. Why are they coming here? That's what, I mean, of, of all of the places that they could get processed water ready to go.
Right.
I'm unaware of an emergency in Langloes, and I'm unaware of an emergency in Bandon.
They.
I don't, I just don't see why we're doing it, you know what I mean?
So anytime that they do, just like any citizen would do, they call John Isador or Public Works to check how much water is in the, in the Coast Guard Hill tank, so that we know that any water that's taken is accounted for, and we have the right to say every single day, no, you may not take water, yes, you may take water, and so that's the, that, that was the.
So the problem that I see is that we're in curtailment, and I don't have the option to wash my car.
Right.
Or water my flowers, and I don't get to call and say, can I do that? But for profit, for profit could come in and do that, and I, I just, to me, that seems immoral, that our, the north side of our citizens' homes are becoming nasty.
Right.
But these guys can drive their, so I don't know, you know, I, I just, is that the position that we want to take as a council? Just, or do we want to sweeten it up, or, you know, it's, I appreciate you tackling it, listen, and I'm not.
No, and I, and I understand, and that's why I was looking at it, because the, with the, as also the thing that I've heard is that, you know, we sell water, and so that was, that was part of it, is that is a way to get the rates in line. I personally don't believe that even doing this is what we can do, but this is what I can do within my, within my purview right now. But if, if council were to say, here's what we think should be charged for contractors, here's what should be, with all those same parameters and all those same things, that could happen, or if council says, we don't want to sell water to contractors, then that's something that you folks could do. But right now, it's on the books, and we have a form that they have, that they can come get water, and they can do that. So this is how I wanted to bring it forward, because I've heard it too, and so that, that's, and again, I've heard other things. Some people say, well, we're in the business of selling water, and that's how we can do that. So maybe if we were getting a good enough price for it, then that would make more sense. Or the other side is, no, we aren't gonna do that.
You could sell it to me to wash my house, I mean.
Nothing in curtailment says anything about bulk sales of water?
You would think that would be in there. You would think that would be in there.
So this, this is why I wanted to bring it forward, because I think it is something that, that we need to, well, not, not we, that you folks need to decide on what happens, and we've put the bumpers as much as we can on it based on curtailment to force them to call our first, you know, Public Works to double check that, but we don't have a good. But we don't have a good, we haven't had a good.
We can't sell it for profit. That's the problem. Municipal water, we can't profit from municipal water. So we can't really charge them more than we think it's.
We can create a commercial.
I don't want to jump ahead on the reports, but John has a pretty good report about our contact tank time today, which is going to change our conversation about this. So it makes me just caution us to make, you know, black and white calls. John, tell, I, I hate to jump ahead, but lay it on us about the contact tank and, and getting more gallons, and what that's gonna do for us.
Well, we went through the tracer survey yesterday, and from what we found, it looks really good to be able to jump our gallons per minute up to about 350, maybe even more. I haven't seen the final report as of yet. With that being said, that's great news. We've been trying to achieve that. We've been stuck at 255 forever. So now, the next process, talking with Melissa today, is we've got to get into the Hubbard's pumps, because we need to increase that, and one's blown up anyway. So there's a few little odds and ends. We've got to make this all work. And then, we need to see what happens with the drawdown of the pond when we do ramp up to the 350, because that's quite a bit of extra water. But it should cut our runtime down and our overtime down quite a bit.
So we're looking at a third more potable water?
Yeah, basically. Pump, pump feed, yes.
Is that enough to take us out of curta-?
Curtailment?
Could we?
Probably not until we get to 40% leakage, down to 20, but it's definitely one giant step forward. You know, that, 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 it's, it's gonna see, you know, there's, there's a good and a bad with that. Because, you know, drawdown right now at 255 is keeping the pond kind of where we need it. So running 350, that's gonna change that dynamic until we do it for a while, when we get official approval through DEQ or OHA, excuse me. Then we'll see. We, we don't have the graph quite yet. So, once we get the graph and we know what we're capable of, then we're gonna have to run for a week or two and see what happens, and what, how the pond drops and how it recovers. The, the big thing is the, the recovery time when you're down two or three days because of rain events.
Right, I'd say it's a.
We're not gonna be able to dredge till next year.
Correct, no. That's correct.
So.
I don't think we're gonna be able to go out until we can dredge. I mean, that's, do you think that's true, John? I mean, that's kind of my impression, is that we're not gonna be able to go out of curtailment until we dredge, because then we'll be in kind of in a better position. Is that right, or is?
Yes, yeah, that's a huge, that's a huge portion of it. We just don't have that footage in that, in that pond. So I'm.
Right.
Like I say, it's a good thing and a bad thing. We just don't know what the drawdown's gonna be once we, once we start cranking out at 350 for three or four days in a row.
How much staff time do you think that's gonna save at the water plant, John? Do you have kind of a guesstimate?
It's a foot and a half a day of water.
So.
Thousand, six, yeah, forty-eight thousand, so it's close to a foot and a half.
How many man-hours, how many dollars are we gonna save?
Well.
Yeah.
I mean, looking at what we were looking at earlier, you know.
It's a really good thing.
I'm, I'm just thinking on the morale side.
Yeah.
I mean, the dollar side.
I like the dollar side.
Morale, I mean, you know, nobody wants to be in that water plant midnight, really.
Yes, that's, that's correct. So I think that's the main majority of the whole benefit here, is being able to see if we can make the water we can in eight hours.
Nice.
Instead of 14. That's, that's a huge, right there. And, and then that means that our, our recovery time on the pond is actually four hours longer or six hours longer, too. So it, it should wash itself.
Wow.
John, do you have money in line for that pump that we really need to fix up there, or is that gonna?
We put, we put 25K in for those pumps and controls, because we knew we had problems at that time, so.
Great.
Yeah. We'll, we'll start that. Right now, we're, are concentrated, our concerted effort probably priority-wise is DD pump replacement, and find out what's going on, why we're losing primer every time we do a backwash. This has been a huge problem for the last three weeks, so we're working our way through that. And then we had this to go down, which you, you've heard about a little bit. So we've had a combination of pump issues in the last few weeks. It has just been kind of like a nightmareous scene.
Thanks, John. Okay, so back to the, the commercial water use.
So can we create a commercial rate? Would there be any?
Well, we have a commercial rate for outside the city, and that's what they would be, that's what, if, you know, that's what's gonna be being charged right now.
What do we want to make that?
That's the question. Is that rate?
And that.
Is barely worth coming to us.
I personally say we sell water, and it's at a commercial rate. So the question is, are we going to allow it or not?
Well, what about?
Because how do we exclude customers?
Well, I think that the rate is more important than, I mean, everything's for sale, right? Everything I own's for sale.
But you, so you think it's okay to charge them more than our established out-of-town rate that we're already charging?
This, this is Knife River.
Right.
Working on an airport. They're making millions, what is it, a $4 million job?
Didn't you already compare Melissa?
But we need revenue, and we're making, what, five grand a month off of it?
So, so if, so it depends on what you put the rate at. If we go with what I can do at this moment, it's still low to me. It's still very low. So we, it'd have to be a decision about what are we willing to sell this, this commodity for. That I don't know.
And what does Bandon charge? I mean, I think those are the, that's the question. What would our competitors charge?
Yeah. I had the person from Knife River contact me when we were doing just our rates that were still on the old paperwork that we had for, 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 um, commercial rates. And he, and he, the guy who's driving the truck, was like, you have to charge us more. Here is what we need to do. And I said, what other, what are other places doing? Because when this came to my attention, I was like, this is the problem. And, because I know it's a hot issue, and so what I have now is that I can get it up to this commercial rate, and I can put, put that to you. And then if some, a committee of this group or something wants to decide what that means or what that is, I will obviously happily entertain do what instructed to do. But I think that's up to you folks of to know what you want to charge for those commercial rates for that.
Can you, can we just instruct you to, I'm not asking you, can, asking the group, can we just instruct management to, or, um, just get the best deals that she can and move forward, or?
Yeah, I think something like that, or maybe research the rates in the other communities and.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, wait, I mean, you, you know that we're getting, because like you said, we want to sell water. We need money. I'm not saying we don't. I just.
So perhaps Bandon and Gold Beach?
You want me to do a comparison with Bandon and Gold Beach?
No, they're coming from north, right? Knife River.
Right, but they.
They have for comparisons.
But once, for comparisons on water.
Well, it would be, it would be significantly further.
Coos Bay, Brookings? No, just what the.
He's just looking for a comparative rate, what the other cities charge in.
Now, whether they would do it or not, just what they do.
Not this particular, not just that person.
Is what I'm saying, right?
Right.
Get it. I was, I was thinking that who actually might be our competitors in this case, but we don't want to create policy based on cases. We want to make it, right, yeah, okay.
So I will look, if you do that, then I can look at Bandon, Gold Beach, Coos Bay, Brookings, you know, some places around that, that would make sense. And I will say that we actually had someone who was doing a, a situat, uh, doing a project in Gold Beach, and they called and asked if they could get water from us, and we said no, that they could.
Well, I'll just tell you. I know, for example, that the city of Gold Beach decided to not do bulk water sales. I don't know if it was for a specific project that I'm aware of that was not gonna be, was gonna be a problem. I don't know if they just did it off of all, like no bulk water sales, but, um, so.
Right. But when asked with that, we said no, especially with our rates what they are right now. I didn't, I'm pointing at John, too. John, John was asked the same question, and we said, nah, not great.
Who are our bulk, bulk water users besides Knife River? I mean, can we get like a, our last 20? Oh, you know who they are? Okay, I don't have no idea.
Is it the fire department? It's vacation rentals by five.
Well, that's not bulk water sales. We're talking about people coming up with a truck.
Filling up at this hydrant here.
And I think the thing goes back to what Brett was saying at the beginning, is if our citizens can't do what they want to do with their water, that's kind of the rub. And so I feel like that curtailment, if we're under curtailment, we might need to, to look at that.
I thought it was based on the tank level. I thought that's where we.
Well, we decided, what we decided is that we would issue, we would issue, because it was like, what are we gonna do? You know, this, my house is mousy on this, that we would issue permits if the tank would allow it.
And people do that now. People are doing that. Those are free, absolutely. They call every day. We, we call John, and we're way to fees on, and we ask what's, what's, how, how much.
That was kind of my baby there, and I let it die.
I see, by listen. Look at that.
And that was kind of the precedent of.
This whole thing, right?
Dictating if they got water or not, and they are communicating with us, so it is based off the same principles.
All right. That's very good. I lost track of that one. That's good to know.
So, so what are we going to just look for a comparative and go with what we got for now, or? Like, what else can we do?
I say do the best you can, you know?
Yeah, I guess so. We could direct staff to come up with the most agreeable number, or the.
I think that's the best.
Sure that we're, that we're comparable to other.
That we're working on it, and.
I'd also like to, I, I mean, we, I don't even remember when the last time was that we reviewed that curtailment policy, and it was so unclear. I would also ask maybe if staff could just look at that again and see if it actually makes sense.
Pressure washing takes a lot less water.
It's a gallon a minute or two gallons a minute.
We, we have.
You're taking.
Yeah.
It's like really.
Yeah.
Bizarre that we, that that's part of our curtailment.
It doesn't use much.
When you wash your car, or you water your lawn, that's full pressure.
Makes you wonder if we would have been better off to, like, cap it at $5,000 for, or 5,000 gallons for residential in 15 or 20.
Well, it's gotta be by the person. It, it has, we weren't doing it right, and that was actually why I decided to come back to this seat, um, to get that straight. Now, I think we're doing pretty good right now. I'm not hearing a lot of grumbling on, on that. But when I wash my car, I get it wet, you know, maybe three gallons wash, or prior to the curtailment. And then I would get my brush and my soap, and I'd go around and rinse it. I mean, I probably didn't use more than 20 gallons to wash a.
The pressure washer is.
Even less.
Not a high volume.
Just two gallons a minute, um, two and a half.
Okay, is everybody good with that staff direction by consensus?
Yes.
Any other high points on the admin report?
Oh, I did have one question. I'm sorry. I, I see what you reported for working with the finance consultant.
Uh-huh.
But is there anything new beyond that?
Yeah, so I just sent the, so they sent us, GRM, the Government Resource Management Group, sent us a contract, and I forwarded that to our lawyer.
Okay.
And then she gave me back just last week the, what she suggested.
Okay.
The language should be. And so I today signed that, did the amendments, that, you know, some of the questions she had worked through those, signed it, and I sent it back to the Government Resource Management Group to see if they have something to go back and forth. If they agree to that, we're set, and she would start September 30th.
That's really good news.
Yes.
Joseph does have his hand.
Yes.
I would just like to make sure by consensus the council agrees to let Melissa, give Melissa the authority to establish a new commercial rate for bulk water sales.
Or am I just doing the comparisons?
Or is she just doing the comparisons?
But not commercial bulk rates, like the transient ones, or, I, well, I mean, like the contractor rates, not commercial.
Contractor rates.
Contractor rates.
Okay, thank you.
So that's great news on the attorney, then. I mean, on the finance person.
Yeah, so those are the things that are in, so to, to update that, yes, we have the, um, that has been, again, I'm in process. I sent it off with that. And then, also, we have interviewed wastewater treatment plant people, and Crystal Roy, our former person, was kind enough to come down and take some of her time to walk our candidate through two days ago, and so we're deciding next steps based on that.
Thank you.
Correct, I can't say, yeah, yeah.
Can I also, just about the sudden oath death thing?
Mm-hmm.
I kind of thought we were, the end there was that we were gonna do an MOU with them, or did we already have one, or how did that?
So basically, good question. So basically, I looked through, and there had been former administrators that had a different form that they had just signed off on as the, as the owner, you know, representing the owners of the land. And so they had a, they had a form that the Department of, Oregon Department of Forestry already had that people would use, that was, that had already been signed one time. I asked for that, since the MOU paperwork was not exactly what we needed, but I gathered from you folks that you agreed with the mission and what they were doing. As long as they got adjacent landowners, you know, they understood that, and so I have now signed that one. And then another one came through that's actually, as I put in this report, that, um, the one you agreed to was near Dede Street. The other one is on California Street, near Lakeshore Drive. There was another little swath of it. And so I, once again, reiterated to Randy Weiss of ODF that I, I could sign that, but that, you know, we, we had said no herbicide use, and that it would, he would talk to the people around also that it was gonna happen on our property, and he agreed to that, so sign that. And the only other thing I have that was in addition was it has been brought to our attention with all the election issues that in the charter, there was a, an omission. It was a typo, basically. Because how it read online right now was that candidates who were trying to get on the ballot could have, could only have fewer than 25 signatures.
Right.
So there was an omission of no fewer, but so we went back to the original charter, and we looked, and it says not fewer than. So I believe that is a typo, that the intent, and we, and we've done it by the spirit of what it was. So yes, you did have to get more than 25 signatures that were valid in order to do it. So everything's been done by the spirit of the charter, but, so I would like to, to alert you to that, and then work to get that properly on our website to what the original charter had said. So I wanted to bring that up, because that came up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The joy of having written something before you could copy and paste it.
Yeah, it was all.
Okay, so thank you for that, Melissa. We're gonna move on to finance. Like I said earlier, it's so nice to have those percentages on the right-hand side of the page.
Yes, and again, this will, once we have Ann Heath here with us, starting the end of this month, then she will be giving you better, even better than this, so you know what's, what's actually happening, where we are financially. So we're looking forward to buttoning that up and having her onboard.
And this is like basic bar napkin math, but just so you guys know, when you're looking at those percentages, like, we're, we're 0.16 through the year right now. Just to correlate with that, uh, it helps.
So I noticed, like, in all of these, there's sort of like a really big punch-up from, for the audit. And, um, I mean, it's like more like auditing and accounting. So is that just us catching up on our audits, basically?
Correct. So it was been, we had to have, prior, the 22 audit was, remember that forensics, like a special forensics audit, and that took a really long time. We are now, but now, and have draft of the 2023 audit that we're right at the end, and Deana and, and I have been answering a lot of questions that are coming from the auditors. We're hoping to have that done. We, we've turned in the information today, and so we're hoping to have that buttoned up and taken care of, so that we can then.
Start the next one.
Start the next one. Yeah, okay. Audit treadmill.
Really good news to know.
Yeah, so we're getting it.
Melissa, on the check report.
Mm-hmm.
Is it possible to say, you know, like, what, what these checks were for? A category type or something, you know, for example, like, there's CJ O'Neill and Company. You know, they don't say what it's for.
Right. And off the top of my head, I don't remember.
Right, oh, I'm sure. And that, you know, there are several examples of that, so it would be really nice to have that on there.
Yeah, our finance person used to always be able to answer those questions for us.
Yeah.
Because sometimes one like that will come up.
I would think you could just put a different category. I mean.
It's not as easy as you think, though.
This all runs out of Tyler.
Reports, well, I'm not saying it can't be done, but it's sometimes hard to.
But it's also like, uh, we could just ask Deana sometime. I mean.
So I could, I could answer that, if you're specific about CJ O'Neill, what that is.
No, I'm not specific about that. I mean, like I say, looking through this, there's a bunch of different things that, you know, you go, huh, I wonder what that was for.
Mm-hmm.
And so, for example, I know in the software that I use, payment type is a category, you know, that you can choose to put on your report, which we don't really need, but it would be nice to choose the category that tells us what it's for. Which we don't really need, but it would be nice to choose the category that tells us what it's for.
Okay, so almost like, I mean, what a, what a list of vendors? Is that what you mean, kind of? And maybe a description?
A description. So, yeah, just like I say, for example, so, uh. Let's see.
It's the invoices, like.
Any of them, that one call concepts, what's that for? Robert J. Dillard, what's that for?
Okay, I know Dillard, I know Dillard. Robert J. Dillard is our, is our wastewater treatment person who signs off because he has the collections. Um, certification and our wastewater treatment plant person didn't. And so we contract with that person to oversee what's happening with that. So. We pay him for his, for his services.
So, yeah, I mean, it, you know, it's a lengthy report, so it would be nice if that was possible to include.
And if for some reason isn't, like Tim was saying, when we get the little more financial backing. But maybe it's easy.
I do have a question, online item zero, 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 one, three, two, KDP Certified Public Accountants. They're due, that wants to do our audit.
Mm hmm.
So it's been years since I've seen a contract from them unless I have, I'm mistaken. We used to approve a contract with them on a yearly basis. Or on a, some kind of a basis.
I think it's three-year contracts.
Okay, so we should be having one coming up.
Yeah, I know for our auditors it was, so I'm pretty sure.
I just remember I.
Three-year status, in my experience.
It must be this, coming up this December then. It seems like it's been about three years.
I can, I can ask about that. Yeah.
Yeah.
And we can always like, you can, you can email everybody if you're blind to see about what the CJ O'Neil is.
Yep.
It's radiator and glass.
It's that CJ, yeah, in Coos Bay.
Yeah, this is glass. I don't know what you guys.
Probably did something for John or.
Glass or radiator for one of the trucks or something.
Yeah.
The other thing that struck me, I was curious about, it says we're kind of like at fifty percent on the nine-one-one dispatch.
Can we have a line item, Ann, real quick?
That is on, can I just say on page three? On, uh, ten sixty-six-two-one-nine-zero.
Nine-zero?
So it looks like somehow, I don't know if the rate went up or something unexpectedly or if you've already paid, or maybe you only pay it half a year.
Or you pay, yeah.
Yeah, you pay. So oftentimes Deena will do that where she will pay half the year and then pay the other half in the middle. So that, so a lot of them can be front loaded. So it won't just be, I mean, I understand what you're saying about, well, it might be just this percentage, you know, in because we're only a couple of months into the year. But some things you, we do pay half of and then we pay the other.
Hank, we're not paying per call anymore, are we?
Year, like.
No.
Like the point one-six-six is just two divided by twelve because we're two months in.
Correct, yeah, right.
So that number doesn't change.
Right, but I guess what I'm saying is you can't say, oh, everything should be at that. Cause it might be that we had to.
But that's a good start of the question. And then you can say amortizes out or.
Right, exactly.
I really appreciate.
And just like this conversation, just the conver, the questions we're having, everything, like, I think we'll get, if, if for some reason we can't get that information on the. Report, I think that with conversation, just like we're doing right now. Like, that's what I remember when I first got on council is there was a few. Counselors that poured over this and it wouldn't matter if it was four dollars and three cents. They would ask if it wasn't normal, which is awesome. Any other questions on this?
I want, golly, no, I don't have any questions. I just wonder how much our. Is county dispatch doing their job still, Hank? Yeah, they're doing not, no hicups or anything there or? Because the, the alternative would be something like Brookings, because we're paying a lot of money for that. And we're getting seventy-five thousand dollars worth of.
When I, when I did a study on this, oh my gosh, eight years ago, nine, I don't remember, a long time ago when I first came here. We were, I'm gonna say somewhere around fifty percent of what we would be if we went to Lake Coos County. I didn't even check with Brookings. There is, with the money issues that the county is having now, something may be changing in the future on their end, but I know it's way affordable, more affordable what we're doing right now.
Well, we were doing the pro-call thing, which was dangerous. I didn't like that.
That didn't work. It was too much effort for dispatchers and too much for us.
Well, it wasn't safe.
Flat rate with, uh, I wanna say like a three percent per year increase or something like a CPI percentage increase every year. It was reasonable. It kept us in the same ballpark where we had been for years and there's nothing else out there that's even close right now, dispatch-wise, cost-wise.
Thirty-three thousand six.
Oh, that's the total, but I'm sorry, I thought that was the half that we, okay, so that's not that bad then, okay.
Yeah, I think you were.
My mistake, I was looking at that as.
You were looking at the line item right above, yeah. Yeah, when you mentioned that seventy-five, I was like, gosh.
Something got me.
It was twenty-five years ago and.
Yeah, so thirty-three.
Thirty-three.
That's reasonable, yeah, okay. Thanks, Hank.
Have you guys seen any changes over there?
That's kind of what I was curious up to is.
I mean, just with the whole sheriff thing, I mean.
Tons of changes, um, that affect us on how we're doing our staffing and our callouts and.
Mutual aid.
Having us, having mutual aid, there's actually a push to help bring us into a mutual aid agreement, possibly with, uh, abandoned. Because of, there's no cover for us. And, and actually, it was actually brought up by the Gold Beach Chief recently in a meeting at abandoned. I'll keep you all posted as this progresses, but the sheriff's office patrol division. In the situation then right now has ill effect on all of us, Gold Beach, Brookings, us. The, the citizens surrounding us more than anybody, so.
Well, I, I know that I had a, I had a, a, an intruder in my home and I'm building on the loop there and, and the. Shared that, that, that they did not dispatch a deputy. And I was told to go secure my home and if I wanted to. Or I could just let them do whatever they wanted in there. And so that's, that was before this. So it's probably gonna get worse.
Afraid so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Hank. Okay, any other finance questions? Moving on to public works. John hit up some of it. You got anything else, John?
Uh, nothing I can think of. I think the majority of everything is listed there. It's, uh, just been a busy couple of weeks, months, years.
Um, I have something in custodial supplies that's gonna change drastically. Right?
Custodial supplies? What do you mean?
Well, we're no longer contracting that, right?
Well, we're, we're working to get the contractor, contracting back for that.
Oh, we are?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I misunderstood. It sounded like we were going to take that on. But what I'm looking at is, is that we have a budget, we have a budget of five hundred dollars. And that's gonna go away quick, right?
What, what, I'm, I don't know what you're, where you're looking.
And he's talking, sir, when we did the contract, we included pay, they were buying the supplies, correct? Or we buy the supplies?
We buy the supplies. We, we, we buy like toilet paper and we buy the toilet paper and the cleaning supplies and all that. And then they use them to, to do that.
And we're only on five hundred dollars on that line item, right?
Yes. Doesn't seem like enough, huh? I mean.
No, not.
No, that's like.
If, if, if it was, but the original total budget of five hundred dollars and we pay for it all.
I think there was some mix where she was bringing her own supplies for like a cleaning supplies, wasn't it?
We, we do, I mean, but we pay for all of the toilet paper and all of the paper towels and all of that.
Even that, even that alone, five hundred wouldn't cover it for three months, like fairly like three months. Yeah, the Battle Rock bathroom, I think probably.
Yeah.
You could increase new by shutting that down for a few more hours a day. That is, okay, so just check into that too.
Okay.
That line item for, for.
So what, what, where are you?
Well, I guess I'm, what I'm, oh, uh, so I'm on three of nineteen.
Okay.
I just, it's, oh, oh. Zero, one, zero, six, zero, six, two, nine, three, five, so you're lying.
Okay.
Custodial supplies.
Mm hmm.
And then that's gonna change, that's, I just don't see how that could be right if we're paying for it all. My assumption, based on that number, is that someone else is paying for it and that that would change in the interim while we worked. For a new solu, for a solution there.
Right.
That might change quite a bit, but now knowing that. Um, that just doesn't seem budgeted.
But this is, this is general fund and I, I don't know that maybe it came, I think most of the bulk comes out of parks and comes out of other places. So that's just, that's just the general fund as far as maybe the.
Very good, thank you.
City Hall as opposed to.
I'm pretty sure Deena said the other day that, that she had ordered like three cases of toilet paper and they were gone, like.
Yeah.
In a week and a half or something.
Right, it was right after Fourth of July, like, and it was just, it just went.
Right.
Really quickly. So, yeah, it's been.
Those are cases.
Cases, rough, yeah.
John, I like your, getting, you were talking, we were starting, we're starting to go back to this, uh, public works report. I like your list of projects. Thank you for that. And, um, I see some of them are checked off. Is that what, I mean, when it's crossed off, does that? It's like when it's a hundred percent, it's done. What does the cross mean? I was trying, is that also the same thing basically? Yeah, I guess so.
Yeah, I don't know what, the line out was all the way across the whole line on it, but when it got sent, I don't know what happened, but yes, if it's lined out, it's done.
Okay, excellent. That's very good. And so all the other things are, are budgeted for this, these projects are budgeted for this. This time period, this year?
That's true.
Not all, not all.
Okay. Okay.
So are all the ones at the top portion budgeted and the new items of concern are not budgeted? Is that how it splits?
You know, to be honest, without having it in front of me, I, I can't answer that, sorry.
Okay, I wanna kind of.
So, yeah, so, yes. So like the. Humus Pond, we did half before, that's the other half of it. Uh, the Floam, that one was taken care of. Thank you, Councilor Vellisus. We're getting that taken care of. So these are things that, yes, so the Arizona Lift Station.
Budgeted.
These are ones that are budgeted, yeah.
Are we gonna be able to get a roof on the water treatment plant this year? I know we had, uh, difficulties with a contractor. Are we gonna be able to find a new one?
I don't think so, to be honest.
Wasn't there some good lead on a roofer? Remember, what, were we in, wasn't I in some conversation with you and somebody was, I forget what that conversation was. We were talking to somebody.
I think, I, as I understand it, a lot of the places and a lot of people that had done roofing had come and done bids before. And then there were, so we're having a hard time getting people to put in bids for these jobs, for like the fourth time.
Talked about with the lean view, do we put a lean view on or?
That's exactly it, correctly. Do we go metal? Do we put dormers? Do we wanna do this? Well, what if we pitched it? What if we didn't?
We put a request for a new roof and then the contractors come with whatever they wanna put on it. And then if the one's cheaper and it's suitable, like.
Well, we had some question whether we wanted to.
The vinyl coating.
Add, uh, you know, make the roof slope like.
Exactly.
I just say like, maybe the professional roofers would have a good angle on.
But we're not asking them for that. We're asking them to, to put it.
To replace them.
For replace the, we're asking them to put, not asking for improvement. I don't think the, the, the RFP was for. Um, improvement, it was for.
Replace me.
As is.
Yeah. So then, then we kind of balked at the idea like we are in a coastal rainforest.
So does that mean we wrote the request wrong? And if we left it more open-ended and we had the professionals' opinions on the cheapest, best way to do that? Like, and they came with us, I was like, oh, if you just threw a pitch on it and put composite on there, it'd be cheaper than metal. Or, you know, something along the lines. Cause we all know that we went through it. We know we missed that it was a coating instead of a tarp like we thought. We know we talked about it for months. So maybe we should like put it back on the professionals' hands and then we look at the financial and, and.
That was one full council ago.
It's been well.
No, I'm honestly.
That was because it was.
It was four years ago.
That's when it started?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, we talked about.
It was one full four-year council ago.
And that's kind of maybe the point of what I'm trying to say.
I, and I.
Well, I think maybe now you better be looking at the Raptors and stuff more.
And I appreciate what you're saying, but I think we need to get a roof on this place.
And I'm not, I was in that conversation with.
I know, you were there.
Anybody else?
No, and I'm not saying anything bad either. I'm just saying it was four years ago. Cause I could think of a person on the council that recommended the metal roof. So, anyway.
Part of the problem is what we have budgeted for this season. We're not gonna get it done for that price by anybody.
Okay.
The guy that bid it, bid it pretty low and we don't have, well, I think the number's there in front of you. Pretty hard to do all the rock damage and replace the roof for what that guy was gonna do it. And that, that's a real bummer, but it is what it is.
Okay.
Sounds like a water recycling project.
It's a real good one.
For tax though?
I, I.
Add that to the proposal.
I agree, I agree.
You don't cover your equipment, you can't.
That's right.
Right.
I do not see a problem with that, actually, at all.
You got electrical upgrades on there?
Like, half of my sarcasm is halfway through.
I know it is.
Need to protect our electrical.
With a roof, absolutely.
With a roof.
Cause I think the walls are probably rotted.
Uh, the last time I checked them, they weren't rotted, but there's water running down where the electrical panels are at, so.
I mean, remember, wasn't there a proposal by someone to just come in and put in a whole like Quonset hut over the whole thing? Wasn't that?
Yeah, there was, like to put a pole building over the top, like on the generator.
That doesn't stop the rot, though. The rot's like rust. It'll continue to rot until it's removed.
Wet rot, dry rot.
Gotta get on it somehow, but I.
Okay, so we obviously need to burn and turn on that in some capacity, however.
It's turn and burn.
Yeah.
No, it's burned.
Okay, John, did you hear that? Mr. Isador?
No.
Need to look into that.
I'm willing to roll around in the mud over this one.
You said it's burn and turn, right?
I said turn and burn.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Anything else? Superintendent Isador?
No.
Okay.
I'm good.
No, I, I was curious about the, um, skid replacement up on Coast Guard Hill. It seems like it was a long time ago when you presented that and we were like at a critical moment and, and now.
We still are. We still are. We're, we're, we're one day of failure. But we had a combination of, I had a lot of problems with that one. Because of the power source that was there and whether we were gonna go to four-eighty and what the building would support without rewiring and. How are we gonna get the roof off or the wall cut? And there's, there's, there's been a bunch of problems and it's kind of like the Arizona Lift Station. We've been talking about it for two years. It took me two years to get it permitted. So, um, the engineering on the, on the Coast Guard Station is. Was painful, but, um, it's back at the two companies that bid it last time and hopefully there's a third company, I think. That is wanting to bid it. So when the numbers come in, we'll hopefully have it done by July, June twenty-ninth next year. I'm, uh, we're still in the process of their Arizona Lift Station. It's been as long, if not longer, so. Yeah, it's a, it's a painful process, but, uh, yeah.
Cool, thank you, John.
Anything else? Gotta get through these reports. Okay. Police, got anything, Hank?
Nope, he ran away.
Uh, planning, page twelve. Any high points, Josh?
Um, really, the big thing is that, uh, Commissioner Jen Head, her term has expired as a commissioner and she did not reapply. Uh, so I would like to give thanks to her for her hard work on working with the Planning Commission. Um, and with that, we now have a vacancy on the Planning Commission. Uh, additionally, uh, the Planning Commission approved an application. For a bulk water drop, a bulk bottle drop at Ray's. Um.
I thought they denied that, but.
Uh, they asked, uh, to move it because the original proposal was to have it along the highway. It has now been approved, uh, in the northwest corner of the parking lot.
Oh, okay.
Um, they also approved it for the south, uh, so they had an option. And then, uh, the applicants looked at putting it on the south side. And they had concerns about the safety of people using it because it's along, uh, not Idaho, it's along wealth. It, it's along the street, fifteenth. Uh, and then because we're getting into the winter months and sun is setting earlier. The Planning Commission is moving back to its original, uh, Tuesday, second Tuesday at three-thirty time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Okay, moving on to the mayor's report. Uh, mayor's been busy with the report this month. Uh, you guys kind of reported on all the high points already.
Yep, we did.
You're excused.
I do wanna, like, I know we're gonna do it more officially, but, but thanks to everyone that helped with the four-point trail. There's a lot of people, there's no way I can name all of them, but having those steps done and access to that is, is awesome.
It's been really appreciated.
Yeah.
Is the steps done?
Yeah.
No, I haven't.
And there's more going on with signage and stuff, so I'm sure we'll do some. And there's more going on with signage and stuff, so I'm sure we'll do something.
That's great.
But it's cool. They look great. Uh, it was an impressive job. They wrapped it up pretty fast. And thank you all for, uh, the consensus on that letter for the board. That, that's, that's big. And just to reiterate, that dredging, you know, that's our big dredge comes in usually by August. It seems like it's been getting there later every year, Brett.
It's, we used to be July and ju, you know. I don't know. I, I'm, I'm concerned.
Yeah, no, it's a.
We have a whole class kind of, of, we have a, a class of younger fishermen who haven't had to deal with that, and it's dangerous. And with, you know, I I just hope that we can get, I've, you know, I've communicated with our state senator and, and a little bit with Congressman Defazio's assistant who worked on the original language of the bill that required the dredging.
Representative Foyle.
Well, it was actually, that's not who I spoke, the original, when it was, yeah, I was trying to tease out some of the specifics for, you know, to drop bombs that, that Val could work with or something. But anyway, we are lumped in with our group. So we have a lobbyist, and the lobbyist works in DC, and that is for Oregon ports. Um, Defazio recognized Port Orford as being neglected. And his work for 10 years was to have us not neglected. And, and our value considered more than our tonnage. And those were some of the terms that, that I was trying to tease out, because now we're in competition with Oregon ports. And so we're no longer kumbaya, and now we need to, to get to the front of the line, and that's what, um, hopefully this letter will help with that. Competing with the international port, you know? So, tough, but we'll do our best.
And was your six months this month or last month?
Me?
Yeah.
I am now six months in, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Remu to do?
Yeah, you do. You do.
When we do that, it's your birthday. Happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, dude.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, you're doing a good job.
Thanks.
I don't know why I thought of that all of a sudden. That was weird.
I don't either.
Yeah, we were really.
He was trying to not to have that come out.
Really super weird, dude. Don't look at me in the eye no more.
I thought they strained now. And you burn before you turn, because if you turn before you burn.
Will you please go to the next thing?
You guys know, we did do, Tim and I, as like the hiring people, we did do like a three-month review with Melissa. And we were thinking of doing a six-month one, and I can't believe those last three months went, or we did it with Tim and I and Pat, the three of us did it. So, just because when we hired Melissa, we put it into the contract that we do it. And it's part of our determination to do it right, try to really do things right. Um, anyway, we did that, and so we will need to get on that to.
Did you, did you do a three-months or?
We did one, yeah, three months. And we didn't do one.
The last three months just blown by.
Yeah, so we were due to do one at six months. We did like a pre-one at six, three months, just to say.
We should, just the rest of the council should see that report.
We didn't write it. We just.
We could also just do an evaluation sheet, too.
I just.
Yeah.
You know, because otherwise, we don't know what's going on. But I guess it's a testament how smoothly things are going if you don't, you know.
Yeah.
I need you to stop talking right now.
You got that evaluation done? Okay, thank you for that. Uh, does that count as a port liaison report?
Yes, it does. It sure does.
We're moving on to school. Council who asked, anything for school?
No report.
Okay, Fire District, Council Tidy. Okay, for lack of a second, we're going to move on to Watershed.
I just passed out a report because I was late this time, and basically, we're just clicking along on all of our grants. If anybody has any questions, you can ask me.
Thank you.
Have something, damn it.
Yeah, we're kind of finally getting to the point where, like, we're actually going to start doing some things. So that's kind of exciting.
Oh, it was this, um, the funding, let's see, it was the 50.
Oh, yeah, the dredge funding.
I had that question. And, and was that, where did I see that at?
We're, we're working, I, it was, we were hoping to get the dredging done this year, but we just couldn't pull together the funding until now. We're pulling it together and working on an application to Business Oregon. And they, they've invited us to submit an application.
Oh, okay, that's what it is, 50-50, low-interest loan.
Yeah, and I'm trying to figure out what that rate is. Just, I would hope to be able to tell you today, but I think it's very low.
It's probably like 90-10 or something.
Yeah, so that's kind of where we're at.
It's not a payback, the loan, the interest loan, it'd be low.
And on the bridge. So does that mean that's like the next step is that they meet with? The next step is that we're waiting for the end of the year. There's going to be some requests for information later this fall, and they gave us a pre-report. So there's some things in there that we're kind of going to need to prepare for. Um, and then Civil West will help us mostly, but there's a few things that John's going to have to help, that, you know, that we are going to have to prepare ourselves. That's the next step, is to answer those questions, hopefully get a gold star and get to the finish line.
Thank you, Ann.
You're welcome.
Oh, and Margot Truni, um, so she's going to go ahead and do, she's going to do some work on groundwater?
Well, she's, I'm just mentioning here, she's interested to start a project to do some monitoring of the wells in our city. And, um, she's kind of looking around for some uncapped wells that don't have pumps in them, so she can just start doing some data collection. And so I suggested that maybe she could put together, you know, that she could present that to us or at some point. But for now, I just wanted to let you know.
I have an uncapped well without a pump, without a pump in it, um, in the urban growth boundary.
Oh, cool. Well, she's, her interest is to kind of look at them in different places and understand. So can I just give her your email or how do you want to do it?
Sure, that's fine.
Great, cool.
Because I'd like to, um, to be pondering, um, drilling a well at Buffington and maybe getting, um, Bandenwell down and Margot to ponder on it and to see, because it could be like $5,000.
We did look there, I thought, two years ago. Didn't we do a whole well exploration?
So, a few months ago, I found those, uh, in Melissa's office, but they've disappeared off the door, so I don't know. But, yeah, Bandenwell had two quotes to do two wells 100 feet deep. One at the city yard, and I can't remember, but I'm thinking it was over there by Buffington.
I just remember it being not, I'm not, I could be wrong, but I thought we explored that because we were trying for wells for a year.
We haven't talked about the park, and I think we got hung up on thinking about the, the, the well that was at the park at one time. And we determined it was capped off, and then we didn't ever talk about drilling there, but that's.
But it was capped off for a reason, right? Like, it wasn't that.
It wasn't being used or.
No, I mean, it was like not that good of a production of a well, or it didn't produce that well.
I can't remember. Yeah, I can't remember what the reason, but it was way before my.
Yeah, and either way, it was not like, I'm just saying, I thought we did.
Because that's the place to have one if, if it was going to be water in it and have it go in.
Doesn't necessarily work right. I mean, even though being right by a lake doesn't mean that it's going to have a good.
Right by the treatment plant is what I'm thinking. We talked about it being at the car wash, as I recall, because we own property over there.
And the car wash has like a 75 gallon a minute well coming out of it.
Get the water from there to the treatment plant, and that's where we got hung up. But if there was any way of getting any, any production of water out of the park, it's right there at the treatment plant.
And I just had seen it as that wasn't, we did explore that, and it did go to work. And that's like a lot of the motivation that we went to a raw water storage sink, is because that's what we were looking for, is that raw water cushion. And I think that's how it started, was to have a, even a, a small well right there could fill up a tank, you know, it would just take a while to fill it up the first time, but.
I, I think what we could do is once we start moving on that raw water tank, depending on how the actual budget comes down, maybe we could, you know, add some inquiry on that front. Because what I, I remember John Isador, I believe, told me that part, at, at the time, we, we don't, if we don't have water to store, it's just like you're having water trickle in, and it just doesn't count compared to our reservoir. I mean, it would be like, our, our reservoir gives us a lot of water. And so that's really the big kahuna, you know? And so if we have a raw water tank, then maybe it will make sense. But, so maybe once we inquire, we could.
But in the summer, we, when we really need the water, that's when the water level goes down and coming down Hubbard Creek, or it hasn't.
Climate forecasts have been for drier summers. And the federal government, a lot of what their offshore wind is related to that climate forecast.
And I had thought the plan was to get dredged. That half a million gallon tank is more than we pumped in like four or five days. Like, that's the cushion. And, I mean, you'd have to have a hell of a well to fill that tank up in a timely matter. And I'm not like.
It'll have it coming from Hubbard, but I'm just saying in addition, like, in the summer, when we have low flow down Hubbard, that, that, that well is constantly going to the raw water tank.
And I agree with Gary wholeheartedly on this, because well is cheapest way to get water. It may not get it as fast as our impound, but we're having to shut our impound down to do a project, so the well would come in.
That's right.
Pretty nicely, in my opinion. Just think if you had 70, 75 gallons per minute, that's 7,500 gallons in 10 minutes.
Well, we can look at the well lot. We, there's a well log for the well that's sitting there right now that we can get a lot of the information.
It's been capped and closed.
It doesn't matter. There's still a well log. Every well is in a well log for the last 120 years. So, the information of how deep the water was, how many gallons a minute was, what the material was, is in a well log somewhere.
What I think is really cool is that since Margot is interested in this, I mean, she's a retired USGS hydrologist. She's like a total pro. She's personally interested in doing this project. So if she can get some information, you know, it'll just help us be informed. So then.
Open well without a pump in it.
It's actually.
No, it's capped. It's not, it's capped.
A well, is like concrete capped or just a well cap on it? I, I thought I just saw.
I, I thought she.
One of the park, I think, is permanently capped.
I think it's permanently capped, because she's been kind of casting around.
But that doesn't mean that there won't be a well log on it. And you might want to ask her, because if that's her background, then she probably can.
Yeah, no, she's, she's interested in looking this stuff up. So I think she, it will be.
So I think there's a consensus to definitely encourage Margot to do anything.
I think that's great. What she produced for us before was fabulous.
Yeah, and I think what she's thinking is if, I mean, her, she's explained this to me just a little bit, but that she would like to get a few different wells around different locations in town. I mean, she already is thinking how groundwater flows from one area to another, and how it might recharge or not with precipitation. So she kind of wants to get it started now. And, you know, like, get a year or two of data, and then we would really know. Then we wouldn't, then we could say, yes, this is a good investment, or this is not, or we could know how other wells may interact. So anyway, I think it's a great thing that she's interested in it, and I'm super psyched.
But why, but the city has no purview about the well. I mean, I'm not saying the study isn't important, but the water master has something to do with the wells. Could we shut down wells? I guess we could in town if we blamed that it was.
Yes, we could. I mean, if.
Change that law.
If we were worried, for example, that, um, there were so many wells that were being drilled, that they were pulling in saltwater, which could be a concern, you know, depending on what's going. We could say, there's a lot of cities that don't let that hap, don't let wells happen in their town. So it's a matter of, uh, the, of paying attention, and this will give us information. So I'm not saying that's what we're going to, I mean, that's not, you know, it's just, she, she's going to start looking at it.
I think that's great.
I've never seen that paperwork, and it may have been before it was Melissa's door, that it was there. Whatever you saw. But I can call Bandenwell and Pump and ask if you would like me to do that.
Yeah, but it's been so many years, I don't even know if he has that information.
Okay, oh, so this was not, this was.
It was like a $5,000, 100-foot drill. He was going to go down with a six-inch casing, I believe, if I remember correctly.
But that was years ago?
Yeah, but they were on that door about the time, whatever, all that stuff that was on that door, there were little pockets. They were hanging there.
Okay.
Somebody cleaned the house and threw them away. They're gone.
Dina might know where they, she's.
I could try and look, yeah. I, I don't think I've ever laid eyes on anything about Bandenwell and Pump when I was there.
So the bid is outdated.
Right.
It's just the information. There were two locations, and he did have both the locations on there. There were two different documents.
Okay.
And I did see him in that room, hanging on that door.
What slowed that process down before? Why did that process stop before?
I don't think there was a whole lot of interest. You didn't have a whole lot of interest. John didn't have a whole lot of interest. I saw it as the cheapest way to bring in water. Maybe, I mean, you can do the map. The map says it produces a lot of water in 24 hours.
Right. And just so you guys know, there's still, like, you can't just open up a well and put it into a municipal system right off the bat. You got to monitor it for a year and all that, so. You know, I'm just throwing that out there with all those.
Well, would have to be, the water would have to be treated, obviously.
Right. And I don't know going into a raw water tank.
Or going to a raw water tank, and that, see.
But if it's surface water or groundwater, that's like, it, it does differ, like, your water parameters, if it's a surface water well versus a groundwater well, then your, your treatment parameters can be different. And it's probably not a big deal. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, but it just seems like with that raw water tank, it's starting to make a little more sense. And with the fact that we have to shut down Hubbard Creek to do a project, it kind of makes sense to have some water trickling in, in my opinion.
And in that conversation, which I never thought I would ever utter this out of my mouth, but there might be some merit into looking into Garrison Lake a little more, because we did just get those samples. And if you could just draw water for an emergency out of there, it might help.
Absolutely.
That's kind of what the engineers need.
It's not the only option, because like, yeah, I mean, that well, that report from Garrison was good, so, anyway.
Okay, so we are moving on to Parks. Council Tidy.
Parks, uh, community building had their event this last Saturday, and it went really well. And we're looking forward to, uh, more fundraising opportunities for them and the parks.
Thank you. TLT.
Nothing to report, waiting for reports back from, uh, the recipients. They usually come in around November, December, so.
Yeah, and I saw in the register that some people are, are drawing their money, so things are moving forward.
Yeah.
Uh, Main Street.
I think the, the main thing is just the visitor center. They're, um, they've got, I think, 48 visitors the other day. And so there's people coming through, and they're working on the, uh, how many people are coming into that area, um, for grants. And Kim Foster continues to work on the discoverportorford.org website. That is really an exceptional website. And she's, um, also created the Facebook page and Instagram. So we're getting some nice coverage for visitors.
Gary, thanks for going to that, uh, community event where you set up your, we're representing the emergency.
Oh.
Committee and setting up your go-bag. That was really cool to see at that, um, I guess that was the Sixes Fire fundraiser.
It's been so long since I had built the goat bag, I didn't recognize any of the gear in it.
Did you forget the toothpicks?
Oh, those are my wallet.
I guess you have toothpicks, like, pretty handily, anywhere you go.
Yeah.
All right, so emergency prep. Or did they jump ahead on you?
Oh, I just jumped ahead on that, sorry. Well, I thought we weren't supposed to say our story unless somebody had a question, right?
Right.
That's, we're not supposed to, that's why we write it down. Gary has a really nice report here that I was responding to.
Oh, the Starlink is one thing that we're going to, we're looking into. That's satellite.
For what?
Uh, it's a satellite phone. We're going to look into, uh, getting one at, uh, City Hall here, and it can also do internet. And so I need to find out how much our internet is, and, um.
We, we've got the port has Starlink.
Oh.
Yeah, so we might talk to Pat about what it.
Yeah, it works good.
We just discussed this the other night.
No, I, I like Starlink. That's the, the best one of them. And it's, it's up higher, too, so, because we contend with the bluff a little bit, but, but not bad.
And are you able to, um, get a, any kind of a government break, or are you just paying the regular?
Just paying regular. But I want to say it's not that expensive.
It might be like 100 a month.
That's what I was going to say. Yeah, I mean, it's not cheap, but.
Like 500 for the initial setup, maybe.
That's approximately right.
There's, so there's other satellite phones. There's EMERAD, and, and there's two different kinds, basically until Starlink came along, but where we are, there's, you, you go to a higher altitude or a lower altitude. It's, it's depending on, on your lat, your, your latitude, on which one serves you best, you know?
Oh, right.
So you might look into, you know, just, you're a sharp guy. You, you probably figured out in, in 15 minutes of this, the difference between satellite phones. And if you Googled. And if you Googled satellite phone services and, and what works best for me or something, in fifteen minutes, you'd be a master of it. I'm sure of it.
But the Starlink is working well for the port.
I don't know. You know, I don't know if it's, I don't, I don't use it, but.
And do you use, uh, internet off of the Starlink?
Yes, we, yeah, but we have other stuff too. This is weird.
Nah, Ziply was the phone line, but there is something weird with that. I had a.
Something weird. We got something weird going on there. I may have a skewed, um, opinion of, of our communications at the moment.
Is this just for an emergency or is this for all the time?
This would be, well, it'd be used all the time because we would be hooked up.
You mean instead of Ziply or whatever we're using now, we'd use this? I thought it was just more for.
I think so. And internet maybe.
For what?
So I know, so I know in talking with Carol Lawton, that she was, could, and Dick Miller, is that correct? Mr. Miller, that he particularly is very concerned that if we had an event, an earthquake, for example, or something, anything with a line or anything with that would be compromised. Whereas he had talked to me specifically, they had talked to me specifically about Starlink, which then is basically doesn't have wires and it doesn't have those sorts of things. And so, um, I know personally for my family, we have it because we're so up in the hills that we can't get. There is no other real good option. And so we have that. And they were pretty excited to hear that, that if something were to happen, even if I'm at home, I could make contact. If, if someone else had Starlink was kind of their, their thought on that. And so, um, I know there are people around who do have it and, and you're exactly right. It's, you know, you pay for the equipment at the front and that is, you know, expensive. And then I believe it's a hundred and twenty dollars a month, um, to, to continue on with that. And again, as a personal person to get it, I, we didn't look at what would be different rates for governmental rates or anything. So it doesn't sound like there is one, but I don't know that.
Would a cell phone with a hotspot do the same thing?
You'd be compromised.
Cell service, which I don't.
Ask Katie event, I think is what the thinking is, is you want something not localized.
Oh, cause cellular towers. Yeah.
The towers go over in the.
But they're talking, I think the new iPhone operating system, their text goes via satellite now.
Yeah, like the nine one one and they have like the SOS systems on the fancy watches.
It won't be long.
So the technology is.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's going so fast. You know, what might be good today might not be good a year from now or six months, or it could be.
But it could be, we could get the internet for the city hall, which we have internet.
We have.
It's just my.
Um, it might be that we.
Yes, we have, yes, we have internet here at, at City Hall. Yes.
And so maybe instead of that, the, it, that money could go towards the Starlink possibly.
Could be. If that's something you'd like me to look into, I could do that.
Cause we, we could probably. Make sure it's secure.
Right.
You know, all that kind of security stuff. Credit card use and that.
Are you talking about the communications or both? You're talking about both?
Both.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the phones get expensive. I think you're not, you're not.
Oh, yeah. Once you get the data.
No, no, I'm not using the phone. We just.
About one way, one way internet coming into her house off the starting is a hundred and twenty-five, but phones are significantly more expensive.
I think that's what Dick has is the phone.
Can't you use like, just use an internet thing to basically do the phone?
Well, I don't know of any, um, of, of any.
Need to look into it, but it's, we're trying to think of all the different ways we can have redundancy and, and communications if there was an emergency. And we lost the power grid. And that's where we're trying to get the radios in the public works rigs and get one here, uh, in the city hall. And to have Starlink that we could get outside the community to get help and let Oregon emergency know that we're, what our situation is and.
But, but like the firemen and the policemen and the emergency services, people have this kind of communication, right? Or these kind of commu, wireless communication abilities when there was a big, if there was a big event, they would be coordinating with it too.
They're just using the radios that we're gonna put in city hall and the police cars have and.
They use a lot of.
Well, I'm talking like the state and federal emergency services, like that would come in and help. Like they're gonna know everything too, right? As soon as it happens.
Yeah, but we can't count on, on that happening here unless.
We're gonna be calling if not them.
Well, if there was a widespread event, we're gonna be the last on a totem pole and it could be weeks before we actually had any, any help.
And won't they be landing their planes on our new airport that we put water on?
No, they'll be landing on the most accessible beach on the Oregon coast.
Won't you be taking us all in a boat, uh, somewhere?
That place is gonna be gone down there.
Actually, they were talking about, um, that meeting we had with, um, Couss, um, emergency that they would bring in the Pacific fleet. There's four aircraft carriers and.
But every port's gonna be destroyed. That's the thing.
No, right. But they would, we would have a beach they could land on and we could get supplies because there would be no supplies other than what was sent in town.
Well, isn't that what the airport is, isn't that the significance of the?
But there again, I think that airport would support nineteen communities and we're the smallest.
We're the closest and we got guns.
Bridges. So it'd be helicopters would be going to all the different communities. And now that's it on emergency.
Well, yeah, no, I know. I can't have, but, but that's why I bring it up. Um, and they do have, so just real quickly, there is a new device that I was unaware of. It's called a satellite communicator that turns your cell phone into a satellite phone. And that might be something that because we're talking about a.
Emergency.
And in an emergency, perhaps this is gonna happen. We think it's gonna happen. We're pretty sure, right? But I wonder if that might not be something that you consider is, is, because then you can continue on about your business cheaply.
Right.
And, and then as long as everyone's trained in knowing how to use this device, if.
What's that called again, Brett? Did you just say?
Communicator. It's a.
That's why I love the ham radio guys. I love the ham radio guys.
Yeah, and we have them too.
Satellite, um.
And is that radio trailer still out of the city yard or?
No, it's, um, Harry Bryant's.
Not familiar with either. Must be new on the.
Okay. So we'll look more on the communicator and we're gonna move on to old business, which we have none. So we will go to the right of way permits, which people have been waiting super. Okay. And they are on.
Page fourteen.
I, I move that we approve the right of way permit with the conditions, um, that staff has suggested.
Second.
For the, for which one? For which right of?
Oh, I thought there was just one of them. Are there two? Oh, the first one for, um, Mr. Bassett's right of way request.
Yeah, those were the big ones for me. It was just the ADA compliance on the facilities and the, the parking spot. That was the main thing for me is, is the ramp adequate enough if the ADA people came on our property with a parking spot that we accepted? Cause the way the curbs were cut out too, I don't know how that could be ADA compliant with the sharp curve there. So I don't know how we're gonna determine the ADA compliance, but read that person that helped us with the city staff? We're going through the bathrooms and everything?
Oh, Billy.
Yeah.
I mean, isn't it, isn't it standard? I guess I'm looking to, to, again, it's, that, that was my concern. Was to make sure that, that everything is there is compliant so that it's on our right of way. So I want to make sure that it's not gonna leave us with liability.
No, I agree.
Yeah. So.
So the motion included, uh, that verbiage, I believe.
It did. Yeah. It did.
Parking must comply with the ADA rules. ADA access must be.
I think we still need a second, don't we? Thank you, Perry. Sorry. You're in my bad ear. But that's both of them. So, uh, okay. Any other discussion on that then?
And so we're saying, just to be clear, saying that everything, the ramp, the, all the pieces of it, not just the parking, but everything has to be.
Everything on city property.
Okay, okay. All right.
That was, to clarify your, yeah.
That is the spirit of my thing. Okay. And the key thing, just to understand, Dave, just so you know, is that like we get, uh, like the USDA comes by and because of our federal grants, we have to make sure everything is up to snuff or we get, um, dinged or in trouble. So that's why.
We don't get to grant.
We have to, uh, make sure that everything's, um, up to snuff.
So would that mean that Dave would have to put in a ramp or in the curb there?
He, he has a ramp in the curb, but it's just that we were, we went to look at it and there, do you have something you're showing us there, Dave?
Do you want to come up and, and show us things? Can't see what that is.
Oh, it was on the last one.
Mostly just want to answer questions. However, I did find a appropriate, uh, ramp perpendicular to the right of way here. And it does show that the, uh, all, all the slopes and all the dimensions and the gutter flow across slope, um, all comply. What I do need to do is to add the tactile, the tactile strip, which is there's, there's what it looks like right now. The cross slope and the, the slope in the direction of travel are all good. And what I need to add is the yellow tactile strip. I actually chaired the first Oregon Architectural Barriers Advisory Committee back in seventy-five, when Governor Straub appointed me to it. When I was deputy director of the Oregon Building Coats Division. So I've been around ADA all of my life, all my professional life. And the number one takeaway is that people with disabilities want to be treated the same as everybody else. So if everybody comes in the front door, they don't want to come in the back door.
Right.
So there's one building in this town that comes close to compliance. Can you tell me what it is?
In former market, right?
It's the clinic. The clinic has two ones at the main entrance and two at the ends. So that if a staff person is a, a disability person, or if you're gonna get a flu shot. The clinic is the only building in this town that comes close to complying with ADA. I, I did, I did a bunch of, did a bunch of photos. The curbs, obviously under the ODOT standard, the curbs can be, can be squared off.
Yeah, that's what we were concerned about was these, that these were.
Well, here's, here's, here's the standard right there. It shows it's slightly rounded. And, uh, I could not find an ODOT, uh, appropriate one, but all over town, we've got squared off curbs.
I don't like the. The end of the sidewalk to delineate the, the right of way.
Which is ridiculous. I can't stand that.
Here's a more current photo. It's slight, slightly.
That was my concern is.
Slightly rounded.
wheelchair coming down here and taking the corner too hard and getting stuck on that up rough curb where this is curved a little bit, you know?
The way that you left.
You have that curb all the way down here in the ramp. So nobody would kind of get stuck on that sidewalk, right?
It's gonna break.
Well, it's, it's ten feet wide. It's ten feet wide and it's, it needs to be four foot, four inches.
Okay. Well, I mean, if it's ADA compliant, I think that's the.
I, I want it to, to be ADA compliant as much as you do.
Right. And so that's the only thing I think.
Because if somebody comes to town and has a complaint, it lands on me first and I don't want one. Be as compliant as we can possibly make it.
Okay. So does anyone have any other?
The more important question was the diagonal parking. This is a proven design. It diagonal parking in front of the post office, parallel across the street. It's just a mirror image. And the other, this, uh, seventh street is sixty feet wide curb to curb. Eleventh street in front of the community building and the, uh, American Legion Hall is sixty feet wide from the face of curb to the fence. People there, because they're gonna be staying for a while, tend to gravitate to diagonal parking on both sides. It would be really helpful to the public if the city had a master layout of what you wanted for parking here, there and elsewhere. Because, you know, I've time goes by and opportunities are lost. I could have had all this done for eight hundred dollars less when they did the striping at the school. They have to come back and remobilize. It's eight hundred dollars more than it was if I could have done it when I wanted to do it. And your form on the website says it's a check off by public works and police and administration. Doesn't say anything about going before a citizens commission. So please, please, please consider that, um, people want to do good things, uh, especially me. I've made exactly zero money with the food court, exactly zero. Did get a couple of pretty good tacos and, and it was an experiment and I'll continue experimenting. But the only reason I did that food court was because the trees and the configuration of the stem wall lent itself to it. And I wanted to do something nice for the community. That's the only reason I did it. They left, their stated reason for leaving was that the cost to utilities is too high. That's their stated reason. Now, there's probably other things involved in that, but they were there for four months. I paid the utilities for two. They objected to paying utilities for two months and they left. So, you know, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do fun and good things, you gotta meet people halfway.
Gotcha. And we still do have to do our process and the council did decide to have the right of ways reviewed when they're structural like this. So we do need to change that form to read that, that, and you know, like if it's upkeep, like we have talked about, we're okay. But if it's a permanent type thing, then, then we need to have it ran by everybody. Uh, wait, Dave, hold on. So when you say mirror image on these parking spots, that means everything in front of the post office and across the street is gonna stay the same. It's gonna be horizontal parking and not mirror image of diagonal parking on the, on the opposite side where the car, the, where the other lot is?
Mirror image, diagonal on one side, parallel on the other.
Okay. But no, cause I was only worried about the trucking going into the post office if the other ones were diagoned.
Office is a proven design, but their compliance for ADA is non-existent.
And then, so the only other canned worms, which really has nothing to do with this particular one, but if we let someone paint lines, even though they're already there, then we have to let everybody paint lines. And it was established a few years ago that we weren't going to do a parking ordinance, which anytime the council could bring that back up. But like, that's a fine line, you know, it's, it's designated parking. I guess it doesn't matter.
I, I think that if, if, if we agree that that's where he should put his paint, it's actually, he's painting our lines.
Right.
Right? So that would be with, shall we have Dave paint our lines for us and pay for it? I say yes. I mean.
Yeah.
But those are our lines.
There are lines, right?
We've been parking spots anywhere else. I mean, there's lines around the corner right there too, but it doesn't matter. It doesn't matter. We have a, that's another discussion.
I, I think the, the parking ordinance discussion is different and we have established parking spots in this neighborhood. And since Dave has a new business, I mean, for now, I think it, it makes sense. So.
I, I appreciate that you come in and, and, and discuss this with us, Dave. Uh, there may have been, you know.
No, I don't mean to be critical, but you know, ten years ago, I asked for a drive-by mailbox at the post office. It's the number one thing that we could help people with disabilities in this town. Langlois has a drive-by mailbox. Everybody else has two or three. We have none.
Did that not work out at the peace park? Cause when you had the peace park or where the coffee shop is now, I thought that we were talking about doing it there.
Drive-by mailbox, Wade agreed to take the one in front of the post office and put it in the alley, which is an alley. And with a snorkel. He agreed to that and then he retired. New post, post mistress is.
Not interested.
Interested. They can't even get their front, you know, their front door after they worked on it. Doesn't work. So ADA, you know, if, if a, if a militant group of ADA people hit this town, there's problems.
Everywhere.
Right.
Well, and that, so I'm sure, so within our conversation, you totally understand the angle you're coming from for the city to make sure on the ADA, just on general.
They're the only place that they don't complain about.
So Dave, just so you know, we recently did a self-evaluation for a part of our grants and, uh, and made the list of all the things that we have to do. And of course, with the community building renovation, that's one of the key things we're going to aspire to fix. So I'm really excited about making progress on that front. And we have a few other items on the list. So hopefully we'll make some headway.
That's the plan.
Okay. Any others questions on that? Okay. I will go ahead. Okay, I will go ahead and call for the vote on this right away. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Rask?
Yes.
Counselor Tidy?
Yes, yes.
Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Bogwitsch?
Jim, yes.
Counselor Belisis?
Yes.
All right, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
And you got that on the paperwork for the right of way.
Conditions that you have in front of you, so. I hope that, I didn't get any staff report, I didn't get any conditions, I didn't get any email, I didn't get notice of this meeting, I have to remember that. I did get a verbal notice from the police, but nothing in writing, nothing emailed, nothing mailed, nothing at all.
Can I give him a copy of my conditions?
Oh, absolutely. Well, and I think it wasn't a condition until it was accepted either, so why would you send anything out until the council ratified it? Very good. Okay. And now we just, obviously, need to determine who's, say that it's ADA compliant.
Well, he came and said that it was.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, we could, we had to turn it, we had to turn it, until it was approved, we wouldn't turn it back to you until we knew it was approved, so that would be what was sent.
The conditions for the ADA compliance, like until it came through the council, she wouldn't have anything to give you. Is why that didn't happen. So how do we determine if it's ADA compliant? Just, there's got, I mean, building inspector?
I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, well, that's, that's the main thing to figure out, I guess. Okay, and then we have one other. Right of way progress.
This isn't much more than what we had last time, to be honest.
And this is what Ms. Army brought in as far, when, when I talked to her about what you wanted to see and what, and where they were. So she then came in with this map, so I passed it forward. So it was the same, it's the same request from her other one, this is just an addition that was requested by council.
We want a little bit more specifics here and then so. She is asking to remove which, all of these now?
All of those, go to the next page.
I see that list of that.
Nine trees.
Where's the Public Works sign on?
This was the one from, we did get the whole packet again, he just put in this additional piece.
When they did the original one, Public Works saw these trees marked off?
No.
It was one tree last time we were here.
Well, so this is a new request then, right?
It was multiple trees.
Okay.
And then it was asked that she, that she mapped them out and flagged them so that we could see.
No, I just didn't know if Public Works had looked at this after these trees.
So I think it's a good question.
No, I did not, I did not know that she marked them. That was the condition we wrote on the first permit, so this, this I have not seen.
Okay, but, so theoretically, if we accepted this, we could do it contingent on Public Works approval. Of just matching it up and making sure, you know, that apples to apples.
It's just very, there are very small trees.
I move that we approve this right of way contingent on our staff approval, Public Works, Police, and Admin.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote, Counselor Tidy. We'll swing back to that. Counselor Webb?
Webb, yes.
Counselor Bogwitsch?
Jim, yes.
Counselor Belisis?
Yes.
Counselor Burns?
Yes.
And Counselor Tidy?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, no worries, we can wait for Perry, but.
We, I mean, it passed.
Yeah, so, yeah, that is, the ADA question is how, who we have inspected. I know we got that drawing, but how do we have someone inspect their own thing? So either way, we'll talk about it tomorrow. And we are moving on to.
Water leak discussion?
Water leak policy discussion, page twenty.
Okay, so I had asked, I had asked Joseph to, well, we're trying to figure out with the water leak, there's some, some questions about it. Because the rates have changed and yet in looking at the calculations that came back with the old forms, it was, it was shown that people might have a catastrophic leak, but they weren't getting very much back on their, on their, on the water side. And it was, and we were trying to figure out why that might be. Because part of the calculation is it needs to be over two hundred percent from their last year's usage. That would be what would be shown as a, as a major water leak. But then there's also a question about, does it need to be over twenty thousand gallons to have that? So basically, the, the idea is if people have a leak, the question of, you know, do we try to give them some refund? Particularly on the sewer, if it was a leak and we can show it wasn't going down there, yes. And that's where most, that's where the bulk of the refund would go. But as, you know, and it's hard because, you know, I feel bad for folks who come in who have had this water leak. And yes, it's on their property and yes, it's their pipe that they do. Because again, they own all the pipes and all the lines and all the things on their side of the meter and we own them on our side. But it's hard if a person has a leak and, you know, you're trying to, to figure this out. So I, I turned this to Joseph as well to look at this because he is awesome with the spreadsheets, to try and calculate what it would be. And then he came up with a couple of questions on that. So I'll, I'll turn it to, turn it to him.
All right, hopefully I can, I can be heard from here. Thank you very much, Counselor Webb. Thankfully, my voice is very deep, so it should carry. So there are really two main concerns that I've come up with for the water leak policy. I'm trying to get pulled up here and now the mouse doesn't want to cooperate. So the first one is according to the letter of our policy, any use last year is charged. So if they only used twelve hundred gallons, they would be charged eight hundred gallons over the base.
Really?
Yeah, so instead of being charged the base rate, it's written in such a way that it would charge them the base rate for the two thousand and then eight hundred gallons.
Under the?
Under, that were under the base rate. So we believed that that wasn't in the spirit of the writing and that that was kind of just an un, due to it not being super specific charging at the two thousand, but we would like to formally make it so, you know, the council agrees that if they use less than the two thousand and they have a catastrophic leak, we'd draw a map, we would charge them any usage under the base at base.
For a sewer.
That would seem fair. But anything under two thousand isn't really a catastrophic leak. I mean, proportions always say it over that.
From before.
So.
So you're not double billing, you're not charging us for water we'll use.
Yeah.
So if they have a catastrophic leak, we're still extra charging them.
Yeah, and that's like the water leak policy of, I've always been around is you just take the average of the year and that's your base number. Or you, like, the year before, you know, which the year before changes because people change houses. But it's, it's, I mean, we have to nail down the math, but it's almost like our process is too hard, just for what you just said right there, you know.
Well, that's what we're trying to find, is that this, this is something that's come up that's like, this doesn't quite feel like I think what we're trying to get to. And so these are things that as we're digging into these things that we find to bring forward to say, ah.
It's almost like our policy should be, we'll forgive the sewer rates, period. Because then it'd be really easy and that's what, you know. But.
What do you do then? I, I, so I agree with that, Pat, but I also disagree with what you're saying. So then what do you do for the amount over two thousand?
It's. So, it currently works is, let's say you have a leak and it's at twenty thousand gallons. And this year last time, it was at twelve hundred. But we do is we charge base rate at the current base rate and then we charge you the average for the first five thousand gallons for everything between what you used this month and what you used this month last year. So in that case, it would be eighteen hundred or one thousand eight hundred eighty. My caffeine is starting to wear off, so the math's a little bit iffy, but it's the difference between the twelve hundred from this month last year and the twenty thousand from this year. And that's why that we would be charging them the extra eight hundred gallons because we charge them the base rate from this year and then the difference between the two. So if we, instead we treat it as the base rate, then we'd only be charging them for the eighteen thousand between twenty thousand and two thousand.
I'm so confused because the base rate is the base rate. So if it's under two thousand, it's the base rate, so why would twelve hundred play into it all? Because once you get over the two thousand, then you have your rates.
Because the way the ordinance is written is it says any usage over last years.
So if you use, if you're being a conscientious citizen and you're using less than two thousand gallons, then if you have a catastrophic leak, they're gonna, the ordinance right now says any over what you did last year, being eight hundred in this case, then you're going to be charged at that higher, at that higher rate. So it's actually working against you, being a conscientious citizen and, and going below when you have something like that. If someone used twenty-five hundred gallons normally and they had a catastrophic leak, well, then this wouldn't come into play. This is only for, for the calculation if someone is under the two thousand gallons, which is incorporated with the base rate.
So they're already using less.
Correct, and so this is like harming them.
But that would only work if it was like, I usually use a thousand and I used fourteen hundred.
Yeah.
So.
But it's how the ordinance, and that's why we're having the conversation, to try and get it cleared up so that we can.
I don't know if I'm, I don't. It's just the way that it's written, but it's confined within that two thousand gallons. So the only reason that this would be an issue is if somebody used twelve hundred gallons last year and then they had a catastrophic leak of four hundred gallons. That, oh, so I used sixteen hundred gallons and that's what excludes it? Because once you get over two thousand, it's apples to apples. It's only before the two thousand gallon gets hit that this is an issue, right? Like, hot chance if somebody used under two thousand last year and they went over two thousand with this leak, that they would get, what's the term at nine o'clock? And they would get cheated out of that, the five bucks for that four hundred gallons. Why can't we just base it off of the base rate? Because it really doesn't matter outside of that.
That's what I'm asking, is because the ordinance wasn't written to take any usage under the base rate and treat it as the base rate.
I just don't think anybody would have considered it that time. Because you think of a catastrophic leak as over the base rate.
So saying normal usage under the base rate.
So maybe that, what if we establish that a catastrophic amount is three hundred percent? Or two hundred and fifty percent, would that exclude that language?
No, it, so it's the normal usage, Pat, so the person normally uses twelve hundred gallons. If they have a catastrophic leak of twenty gallons, it would still, this issue would still apply.
And we can't just do the math of kicking them back that, that five hundred gallons?
That's what we've been doing, but that isn't how the ordinance is written and that's what we're asking, is that we can formally treat people who use less than the base rate as if they were using the base rate for the difference between and base rate.
Base rate's the base. Yeah. Use a thousand gallons, you pay the base rate. Use two thousand gallons, you pay the base rate. So I'm just having a hard time wrapping my head around this based on that. But I hear what you're saying and whatever the language needs to do to clean it up, it's.
That's what we're trying to do, it's just to say.
Okay, so what's your guys' suggestion?
Anyone who uses or I should anyone who uses, who used at this time last year, less than the base rate, would be charged the base rate and usage would start at two thousand.
Saying the same thing.
We are saying the same thing. And basically, what I should have said is that the ordinance was not written to make it seem like the you should start at the base rate. It's the you should start at what you used last year.
And it didn't even mention the base rate or touch on it at all. Too, so, okay.
Potentially.
So what do you need from us? Consensus?
I move to approve treating usage less than the base rate as two thousand gallons for adjustments and directing staff to research or develop an alternative adjustment calculation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Had another thing I wanted to bring up, but we can do it during additional discussion if that's all right.
Is it on this?
It is on.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, we're, we're there, we're discussing.
So.
We should have the motion before we started.
You're right, we should have. Additionally, because of how we've changed the rates and the fact that we charge, no matter what the usage is, we charge per one thousand gallons, the average of the first five thousand gallons. People really don't start making their money back for, until like ten thousand two hundred and seventy-five gallons. So if you suffered a catastrophic leak that was less than that, you would not make any money back under our current policy. And moreover, because of the way that it's structured and billed, I went through to figure out how it changes. And if someone normally uses two thousand gallons, they would need to have a catastrophic leak of eighteen thousand eight hundred gallons in order to get a refund.
Any refund.
Any refund. A catastrophic leak of three thousand gallons, or if they, at this time, you, last year, used three thousand gallons, they would have to have a catastrophic leak of fifteen thousand nine hundred fifty gallons in order to get a refund.
To get any refund.
And.
Maybe we're. Yes.
And it keeps going like that. They used four thousand gallons, it would only have to be thirteen thousand one hundred gallons. So the more they use on average, the less their catastrophic leak needs to be before they start making a refund. Because of how much the average of the five thousand gallons we're billing them for affects the, the bill.
And that's what we were seeing on people's paperwork and I, you know, we get this catastrophic leak and I'd be like, how are we only giving them back twenty-six dollars and eighty-two cents on, you know, or whatever? It was very small compared to what their actual bill was.
Don't forget you're forgiving the.
Yeah.
Right?
And.
Yeah.
But it's a poor catastrophic.
They get sewer back.
They get all their sewer back because it doesn't go down the sewer.
They get a certain percentage of the sewer back.
Is it clearly written that?
Why wouldn't you get all your sewage back?
This is a once a year thing, right? It's clearly.
Getting mad at now that it's a once a year situation.
So if you use two thousand gallons and then you use twenty thousand gallons, why wouldn't you get eighteen thousand gallons back on your sewage because it didn't go down the sewer?
I think that is how it works.
So I'm not as prepared to the question because I didn't know we had a sewer refund form until after I'd already done all the work on the water. But I know that we have a form for the sewer adjustment and I believe it is a one hundred percent.
It's not a one hundred percent, no, it's not.
Why wouldn't this staff form be tied in with the water form? It's all one.
It is now, that's what we're trying to do. So now we've created a spreadsheet that has both sides of it and that we can get, and that, it wasn't until we created that that we saw that this is not, it doesn't make sense, it's wonky.
But has anyone come in and said, I usually use a thousand and I used eighteen hundred?
So what prompted this is we did have someone who used gallons and had a catastrophic leak of, I believe, around, around twenty thousand, I think it was eighteen thousand or twenty-two thousand. And, and we couldn't figure out why they weren't getting a refund even though they were using more than ten times their normal water amount. And basically, when I began digging into the numbers, I realized it's because of the fact that we charge the first five thousand gallons and that rate is substantially higher than any other rate until you get past ten thousand gallons.
Yes. Has anybody ever looked at their homeowner's insurance policy? And seen that's covered? Because I wonder, that would be damn it. I mean, could, could one argue that something happened which caused the leak, which cost you money, therefore your policy would pay out? I just wondered if that's ever been even thought about. I've thought about it right now, what.
Be a insurance claim.
Yeah, I mean, you know, like, like, is it, is it incumbent upon us to insuring someone's delivery system beyond our belt?
And that's, and that's the, that's the ultimate question of where, where does that, where does that land? Because.
It's the meter is what it is and I get the sewer part of it is completely fair. I get that, but.
So if you have a leak and you, and you find it and you fix it and all that, that's just there, I mean, one way to think that is part of doing business of being a homeowner, that if your pipe bursts, then that's on, that's on you, right?
We're, we're burdening the people who put the right pipes in with paying for the people that didn't put the right pipes in.
But we're also turning the screws to people. We were concerned about the rate raise because we are in an impoverished community and a lot of those people do live in the older houses. So if they're hit with a thirty thousand gallon a month bill in a week for a bad break, then, then we're really turning the screws.
Well, I remember one of them was, you know, up on King Street. Remember that big?
And they weren't there, they weren't there, they were gone for like a month.
They come to town for two months a year, but they don't pay the groundskeeper. Are we supposed to ask the little old lady down over here to pay for that up on the hills vacation or, or, you know? Up on the hills, um, vacation or, or, you know?
No, and maybe that's another thing that should be put in there, is full-time resident or, or, or.
Maybe that's, maybe that's a consideration to make. I just, my heart falls up on it.
Oh, yeah.
Shut off valve. If, if a person like that that goes away for six months a year, they should shut the water off half a meter and then guess what? If it leaks, it's on the city side, it's not on their side.
But then.
No, but they're not that hard to put in.
No. They all have meters, like if you go to the power company, if you, you can turn off your power.
But they didn't.
But you, it's 30 bucks a month.
Well, you can't turn off the power on theirs. You gotta turn it off on your break.
No, you, you get your service shut off.
Oh, right.
And it's 30, and it's still.
Is the service on yours?
So, so, so I'm dealing with this right now. So the service shut off. And I say, well, I don't, I, I'm not sure how long it'll be until I'm ready to put it back together. And it's a couple of months, maybe, then I want to re-energize it. And they're like, okay, well, you don't want to turn it off then because we'll charge you 12 months.
Right.
Of base rate. So we could realistically charge the base rate, continue to charge the base rate and, and anything like that, right? But have it shut for somebody that wanted to leave town or something. I don't know, I just, is it incumbent upon us to have our citizens pay for their neighbors beyond sewer?
Um, a couple of quick things, councilors. First off, I sort of building on the website, I do believe that you can get your water shut off from the city and then pay to have it turned back on when you're back and if you do go on extended vacation. Additionally, the main thing that I came here to talk about was the fact that, basically, looking at it from the lens of getting a maximum return on catastrophic water leak, the ideal amount to use is 10,275 gallons. And we wanted to make it more ideal for people who normally use less than that amount if the people who use less than that amount get a catastrophic water leak.
It's just hard to, you catastrophic.
Yeah.
Seems big, you know, like, like, like was, and, and how do you, like, looking at a bill, like, my, I had a catastrophic leak with, you know, 18,000. So it was obvious to see that that was a catastrophic leak. But if you're saying like, well, you know, I usually only use 2,000 and now it's 3,000 or, you know what I mean? Like.
It would still require the 200% over normal usage.
Okay, all right.
So that's my, make, it's like, it, it seems like it's so hard. Like, if we just took an average of the last year's usage and that was the base, and then anything over 200% of that is what enacted it, you know, or just use math to.
Dear math, and I would like just.
Why don't you guys talk to us next month with an easier math, something that works good for you, knowing that we were okay with you making the adjustments? Can I get a consensus to authorize staff to?
We have a motion in a second. We have a motion in a second.
We're just coming back with an adjusted raise.
The initial problem.
Okay. So that'll, so you can come back with whatever you want. Okay, so I'll call for the vote then. Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
He left us.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Counselor Valisis.
Webb, yes.
Counselor.
Yes.
Yes.
And Counselor Pug. It was such a long conversation.
Well, he brought up, then he shifted gears into another.
Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha.
Other portion of it.
Okay, back to the script. We are on. So work for culvert removal. 21.
Set up on the, on the.
Yeah, so this, I'll just like say it briefly, this is one of the grants that we are got. It's 100% forgivable loan and our project lead on this is Aaron Minster at the Soil and Water Conservation District. But one of the pieces is that we have to do the engineering part and Civil West is going to do that, make the forward the scope of work. All of this will be paid for by that grant. It's the first step of what we have to do to then remove it, which will require another grant.
I move to approve Civil West scope of work as presented.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Oh my goodness.
And that would, so was there any other sediment risks other than that failing culvert that they found in the study?
Well, this was the one that was the highest priority. And so as part of this grant or this planning grant is that the Soil and Water Conservation District is going to do a complete inventory of other sediment risks and make recommendations if there are other things that we have to do. So that's part of this project. But the, the biggest, like, the most urgent thing is to do the engineering and figure out how we can move forward with removing this pro, removing this, uh, failing culvert, which I have some photographs if anybody's ever interested in it. It's like the bottom of the culvert's like coming up. It's, yeah, it's totally failing.
So how, how big is it? 24 inches or, or?
It's probably 48 inches.
Is it a big one?
It's bigger than me.
Oh, it is? Okay.
A real big one, yeah.
I, I was only asking from the penny pinching standpoint of if there was more sediment risk and we could engineer the whole project and then put the, the proposal out as a whole project, then it wouldn't be as piecemeal, then we wouldn't be paying engineers to do things twice.
Right. Yeah, we don't have, this is actually, it's actually a culvert complex. There's one big one, but then there's also some like pipes that are coming down on the side of the road. So it's a, it's a pretty complicated thing, but we don't have, we don't have other ones. There could be other ones in the future, but this was the one that was identified as the highest risk.
And there's a road.
But there was other ones in that report? Like, were in the study they did to, to, to determine that this culvert was failing?
They didn't really do a full inventory because that was the forest management plan. So it wasn't really like a, a road sediment study. They were, the guy was just looking around and he checked it out and he said, holy smokes, this is, um, this is, it could be a high risk. And since we're trying to dredge our reservoir and everything, it just seemed like this was one of the things that we should try to fix and, because it's above it and kind of get it going. And of course, um, you know, we've had this conversation before, it would seem like, can't we just go and fix it? But the way things work these days, this is, you know, fish bearing stream, you have to do the engineering, go through the steps. And then I've been told that like, once we do this, then we're in the lane to then get the grant to do the implementation to remove it. So that's, that's the path.
Back if we don't use it all the money. It'll seem crazy expensive. You look at that number, it's like, my goodness, to dig up a little pipe and put a little pipe back there. I mean, just.
There was a road that went over the top of the culvert.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, you dig that out the way. I mean, I, I tell you that.
A lot of material.
That's the way it is. That's the way it is. Anybody that's ever run an excavator could look at that and say, that's like a three-hour job, you know, and miss 40 grand.
Well, I went out there on the field trip with him and I was actually, there was more, there was stuff to it as to like, well, how are you going to plan to remove the material? Where are you going to put it? Because it's steep slopes and how are you going to like get it over onto the, I mean, you're right.
No, and I'm not, I'm not.
He had a lot to say.
Yeah, no, I, it.
Anyway.
Not critiquing it, I guess that wasn't critiquing, but.
Yep.
That's the way it is. I get it.
Yep.
And this is just for the engineering.
Yeah, I forgot.
For the project.
That's right. That's, that's.
Right. Yep.
It's a strange world we live in.
So we got a motion in a second? Lot of money.
But and the forest management plan is not complete yet.
No, no, that was completed.
And that's what determined that this culvert needed replace. But there wasn't anything else on that management plan of things that we need to plan for to?
It, well, they actually said you should do a complete inventory of other sediment sources. So that's what this, the, the, the project is going to be doing the engineering to remove the culvert and then doing a more comprehensive look at other possible sediment sources that we might want to abate or stabilize or do whatever. So.
So that is part of it, that extra study.
That's not part of this 30,000, that's part of.
The 100.
The 100,000. This is just for the engineer to do, like they do.
More culverts.
Topographic.
You can go up to it, $100,000 in planning.
No, I know, but if there's more culverts, I'm just talking about paying engineers twice.
If there's more culverts.
They could do in one project. That's all I'm saying is we're like, we give engineers this open-ended ticket of, oh, you told us we need to do this, oh, you told us to need to do that. And I'm just wondering if as a whole project, we can save a couple, 10 grand or so.
Yeah, we.
And if it's not feasible, it's not feasible. I just, the words that were presented, it's like, well, is the forest management plan have more stuff on it that we could tie into this? It's the only question.
Yeah, no, it, it doesn't. And so the thing would be that, because basically I have actually tried to do a lot of walking around up there. I've tried to get to know where the real sources of sediment are and stuff so that I could understand it in a real grounded way. It's very steep, difficult access terrain. And so, um, the person who does that inventory will like find the spots and then, um, and then, anyway, all I can say is this is how, this is the, the steps of doing it.
From the engineers, pretty, pretty much, or?
Yeah, this is from the engineer.
That's from the engineer.
And Aaron, who's the project manager, asked, we had a discussion about what parts the engineer should do versus what parts, you know, she would be doing. And the engineer does the stuff that's like figuring out the topographic and how it's, how the contour is going to be so there isn't erosion into the stream when it's all over.
Basically taking it back to where it was before the road got put in.
As much as possible, I think, yeah. And it's just, uh, it's all, it's a pretty erodible area.
Okay. And I just, so hopefully that that study doesn't determine that we could have used a bigger culvert. You know what I mean? Once you tie the whole plan in together, that's what I'm, that's what I was worried about, is there's more to it. And then we do this whole plan and then they come back and say, oh, well, if we would have put a 60-inch culvert in, now that we know that we have this much influence from here, here, and here, it'd only be another 40,000 for us to plan for you.
But is that, but, but isn't it culvert removal?
Yeah.
I mean, there won't be a culvert there.
Yeah.
If we're doing a forest management plan to assess our sediment, that's the whole valley, that's our property. So if this culvert ties in with that whole forest assessment plan, I'm just saying I would hate for us to put in this 60-inch culvert, have them do the forest plan and then come back and say, we did all this hydrology and studies the topo and now you need 80-inch culvert or 260-inch.
We're not replacing.
That's confusing to me, isn't it?
We're not replacing.
It's going to go back to the way it was before they put the road.
So take the road out.
The road just goes to like across to this steep slope, it doesn't really go anywhere.
So no culvert replacement, just rip.
Okay, well, that's different, I guess. I didn't know that. I mean, who takes a culvert out? That's, that's a perfect, that's a perfect.
Now we said it's not going to be an issue moving forward if we remove it, then it's.
That's.
No, well, if they're doing, if they're doing, I, I misunderstood. If they're doing riparian stuff, they're going to be doing all the studies beforehand anyways. That's the whole point of it. I, I've been off because I thought it was a culvert replacement, not removal.
Removal. It's, it's like the, it's this place where there, it's very steep, like it.
You don't need a road there.
A road pours in sediment. It was like put in like a long time ago. Some guy ended up and did this steep job and it's like kind of a mess and, you know.
I get it.
We obviously don't have to maintain that road or anything.
Correct. So we're trying, because it's our, it's on our.
Oh, gotcha, it's on us now, so we don't have to worry about it.
Okay. I thought one was going back into? That's great.
Removal.
Okay, so.
In the forest plan, is it?
We got a motion in a second, right?
Address like.
I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote on that if there's no more questions. Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
He's eating monkeys.
Got a pair of cats.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Pogwigs.
Amen.
Pogwigs. Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Valisis.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Okay, MOU with Community Complex Friends and Rotary Service.
This has been something that we, we have been, um, working on, the, um, Community Complex Friends is a group that have been, um, raising monies to, to help spur this on. We've been working with them. Um, we also have been working with, um, just as the, the whole scope of things, working with HG, it's not on here, Joe Slack and his architecture group out of Kus Bay. And so this basically, because the money is coming through us, the CBDG grant is coming through us, but they also Rotary Club, Community Service Fund and the, um, Community Center Friends were basically three entities that are working together to do this. But the, but the funds are coming through us and so we need to have an agreement, um, with basically those three groups of who's going to be responsible for what. And that's what this is. And this has been run through Lori Cooper, our lawyer, our attorney, to make sure that it's all, um, on the up and up. And on page 25, you see even the beginning status of the collected funds. And so they've been very conscientious, this, this group has been working very diligently, not only in the planning of what the community center, um, the community building itself is going to look like, that's what the CBDG grant part is. But then they're also working on the American Legion Hall on a separate group with a separate, um, funding sources to make this whole complex amazing. And so there's been a few of us who have been involved with that, um, and these groups. But we want, what we need to have, now that we're talking the financial responsibility to do this, we need to have an MOU agreement so that we can move forward. So that's what this is. And again, it's been through our attorney and, um, it's been through their groups, they've talked about it and so.
And the money always gets to us first and then this first.
The money gets to us.
To our account.
Right.
With the line items necessary to keep track of it.
Right, so we've done that for the community building itself and with the CBDG grant, a federal grant, which is part of what we've all been working on, getting all these pieces and parts together. And then we've said, yes, we will be the grant holders and, and take care of this. But then they are doing extra funds and things for the, the entire complex piece of it. And so we just have to have this, that, yes, we're going to work together. And so we just have to have this, that yes, we're gonna work together. We are the fiscal agent that it's gonna run through, but they are supporting.
Did you get a motion for that?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Rotary Club, Port Orford, and the Community Center Friends as presented.
I second that.
Any other discussion? So basically, it's like a signing sheet for a bank or they're just making them signers in a way or or for just the ease of it's so we can, they can, we can both put money in the account kind of thing?
Kind of, yes. But they're saying that, yes, we're gonna continue funding. So they're saying that they're collecting money for this, but we are the fiscal agents agents so that they are saying that they are going to collect the monies, but then it's gonna come.
So they they don't have to get a a.
They are a non.
It's cleaning it up so they can collect money for us, basically.
And then we're gonna say that we're promising that when they give it to us, we're gonna spend it on what.
On this project.
Gotcha.
Yep. So it's just making sure that we're in good faith. All of us moving forward. It's just business. Yep.
I would ask that when we deal with a nonprofit, that we put, you know, the little A 503C in parentheses next to it or something so that we know who's.
It's it's on page 24. It's only one of these groups. It's the Rotary Group. It's not just Rotary Club. It's the Rotary Club Community Service Fund is a.
Right, so 503C.
That one is.
So they're like the fiscal.
So the other group is.
Just some citizens who are raising money.
And then their money goes to who? Oh, so. Gotcha, gotcha, gotcha. And then they're just putting it, are they running theirs through that Rotary?
Well, they've basically been storing it in this 501(c)(3). They've been holding it there because remember they all started this before.
Years ago, yeah.
So it's just been sitting there and then.
Now, will that money come into the city?
Yeah.
To be spent on this project, though.
Once we agree to this MOU.
What what happens is is that oftentimes cities will get money for a purpose and then they'll sit for a few months and then the storage tank blows and you use that money to fix the storage tank. And so they're smart to do this because they're nailing us. They're nailing us, you know.
Yeah.
But it's also good for us that we're gonna enter into this and do this and that they're going to.
Smart of them.
Yeah.
Well, it's really needed too for our finance people so they can keep track of this. We have to keep track of this for our auditors.
Yeah, exactly. That's part of it is just to have an agreement that everybody knows what the terms are.
And it's not gonna take so much.
Internal controls. This is just like two signatures. This is just an internal control to make sure that the money is getting.
And it shouldn't be a big burden on on you or Deacon.
No, this protects the city. It protects us and it and it also keeps, right, it's a burden if we don't know. And so, yeah, we're keeping this. We're trying to, things the right way.
And I had a little conversation with Lehi about that today. And we could make some minor adjustments if we wanted to, but he's more than. He's good with it.
I'm going to. If there's no more discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and call for that. Counselor Webb.
Oh, we first. Yeah. Uh, Webb, yes.
I like to look you right in the eyes when I.
I don't like that.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
I don't like that.
Counselor Podwigs.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
Counselor Rask.
Okay, so I just figured, well.
Yeah.
It's four.
Yes.
It's four.
I'm sorry that I started asking what.
That's okay.
Know you guys were.
You're having a little.
Still having discussion on it. If we're good, though, we're okay for you. But yes, for you, Counselor Rask, Counselor Valisis.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed unanimously and we are on to assigning authority to carry out tasks relating to community building to city administrator Radcliffe.
I am so moved. The the motion would be to where did it go?
Page 26.
Page 26.
I spoke too soon. I'm sorry. I had it in my hand. I move to approve the signing of authority to carry out tasks relating to the community building to city administrator Radcliffe.
Second.
Okay, first and second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Counselor Valisis.
Yes.
Counselor Rask.
Yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Webb, yes.
Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
Counselor Podwigs.
Tim, yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Continuing action items, we still have the irrigation meter and the CUP extension. Wait, that's continuing action items. We don't need to worry about those, right?
No, we do them.
You do have to do. It's like this is like the second reading.
Well, why aren't they on the agenda then?
Just in case that we want to talk about it.
No, it's it says we're not acting on these, right? They're just continuing action items. If they were action items, they would be under new business or old business. Are these ready to be acted on?
They are, yes.
Yes, they are. So they're in the wrong spot.
Okay.
So I have a question on the irrigation water meter. It's saying that the resident water user may use a city-approved meter.
Must.
And and it it seems like it will or shall.
Yeah, I thought it was shall the last time. Did that get changed?
And then then for it to be made clear that they're paying for the meter.
I'm 28, top of 28.
Oh, oh, sorry. Okay.
This is a second reading, so if this is second reading, we can't change it too much. Hopefully, we're going back to the first reading.
Yeah, but I thought we had, we had changed it to shall last time. I know we talked about that.
Because we, because somebody has to use a city-provided meter. That's what we discussed.
Because this is this is just saying they may
that could.
So that means they could use some other meters.
Right.
But then they couldn't get credit for it. Well, but under this.
Well, then they, there's, yeah, there's. And it's not clear that the residents pay for the meter.
I think.
Right.
I think the may means some people will want to do it and some people won't.
Right.
But it's the ambiguous of somebody arguing with us in there.
No, I I get it, but I think that's why it's written that way, but.
So do we have to re-pen this and bring it back or can we do the one word?
I think it's basic changes, but.
And if that's the only change we can find, we probably could move to accept the ordinance with changes from May to shall.
Yes. And then is there any issue you think that residents realize that they're gonna be paying for the meter?
If we have meters, we we do sell them to them. I think they understand that that we're not gonna give them to them, but I if you feel that needs that level of clarification.
I I don't know. I'm just throwing it out there.
I, yeah, so I mean, at no point have has the city provided these meters to anyone who wants to. That 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 hasn't been
ever.
Past practice ever. This is, this is a.
We were trying to come up with the ordinance to nail all that stuff down, so I was just curious.
Yeah.
You know, when I went back and read it the second time, I think what you're saying is right, Tim. It's like, yeah, you may use, you may use a city-provided meter, not like a non-city-provided meter, so.
So changing it to shall would work?
No.
Understanding that it, no?
No, I don't.
Be may.
It should be may.
And the only question I have now is the way Gary's reading it says a city provided like.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The cost, there's no cost there, but we've had these meters forever and everybody's always had to pay for it.
Yeah.
How about we just put, can we put something in parentheses that says, you know, to be purchased at cost or something? Because we're not making money on them.
Right.
To qualify.
A city, a city provided meter at market value.
Okay, that's a good one.
Qualify for reimbursement.
So, yeah, like on B, it should say to qualify for reimbursement, comma, users must turn in their.
Okay, are we getting into too many changes or are we good still?
Right.
I I was, I don't like more than two or three personally, but. And is it, is it critically pressing? One or one month is gonna kill us. I mean, I know we want to wrap up everything we can, so if there's not too many changes, then.
I mean, I think that the changes are minor.
Yeah, I think so too.
I think the spirit of it isn't changing. I think it's, you know.
Correct, correct.
It's just nailing it down because if somebody comes in and goes.
They could come in and say city provided.
Paid for it. And that's what we're trying to do in having the ordinance is clear it up so there's no big.
We have it written down. We're ahead of, we're we're ahead from where we were. Okay, so so we'd say residential water users may, I don't, I didn't, I need to know that.
City provided meter.
To track water use.
At market cost.
Market, yeah.
I would put that in parentheses, at market cost in parentheses right after meter.
Okay.
Track water used for garden irrigation.
Or you could even say may purchase a meter from the city.
Yeah.
Yeah, instead of use, may purchase, a city provided meter, and that's way cleaner and easier.
Yeah.
Okay, so what was that? Residential?
Residential users may purchase instead of use.
May.
A city provided meter. Track water.
At market cost to track water used for both those changes?
I don't think we need market cost if you put.
No, we don't need.
Okay, okay, that's right. Okay, purchased.
Track water used for garden irrigation. Yeah. And then Brett suggested, so I think that's good. And then Brett suggested for B, just to start with, to qualify for reimbursement.
Right.
Comma.
Good, yeah.
What?
If they're seeking reimbursement or something. Yeah, to qualify for reimbursement.
Sure, and that's just its own sentence at the top above the letters, like to qualify.
To qualify for reimbursements, comma, users must turn in.
Semi-colon, actually, semi-colon.
Yeah. Well, comma for reimbursement.
To qualify for reimbursements isn't a full sentence on its own, which is when you'd use a semi-colon. Both pieces have to stand on their own.
And then the other thing is, I don't, D.
Oh, you're saying.
Like italic.
You're not saying a semi, you're not saying a semi-colon, you're saying a colon.
I don't really, I think it should just be the same.
Are you a teacher or something? Do you ever do English?
Maybe.
Do you think or is that just?
But I did writing.
Is there a reason that D is like italic and bold?
No, it's, there's not. I, we.
Oh, okay. So it will eventually just.
So it'll be normal.
Got it.
When it's actually implemented, but that was the language that was.
Yeah, added, got it.
Added in.
Right.
I think that's good.
Dude, wouldn't it? Wouldn't it to qualify just be good and put all of them?
That's why they were saying just put it, yeah.
Yeah, like as a sentence ahead of all of them, to qualify for.
Colon.
To qualify for the garden meter policy, you must do a B.
And I had it kind of, yeah, that's, that's.
Okay.
You guys always argue so much over that. You and Ann just argue.
Collaborating, it's not.
Sidebar. You're gonna learn intern on that.
That's good. I think that's good. Do we have a motion?
We do.
Okay, so now I need to read this with the changes.
I think you just have to read by title for the second reading.
Okay, and then with changes, so, okay.
Yeah, well, with changes, you're gonna have to read the whole thing to make sense.
Yeah, well, minor change, I remember Salo allowed us to do really tiny minor things, but that's subjective. I think when you.
I think they're pretty minor.
You got a four liner with 40 words and then you add four words, that's 10%.
10%, yeah. Well, it's not catastrophic, so we're fine.
It doesn't change the the meaning. Mostly, it's just like, well.
200%.
I agree. I think that we get away with it.
Writerly stuff, just making it read better.
So.
Okay, so I'm gonna read this out. Norads to amend chapter 13 of the Portal for Municipal Code to include use of garden meters within the city of Port Orford, whereas the city of Port Orford has been offering garden meter credits without policy based on municipal code and whereas there has been confusion about the process and responsibilities of receiving credit and whereas it has been determined that a policy based on municipal code would resolve this issue. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council authorizes the city of Port Orford to adopt the following as chapter 13.16.120, use of garden water meters within the city of Port Orford. 13.16.120, use of irrigation water meters within the city of Port Orford. What was the sentence?
To qualify.
To qualify for reimbursement, the, uh, A residential water use users may purchase a city provided meter to track water use for garden irrigation during the period from May to October. Is that the only one change?
Yep, well, yes.
Okay. B, users must turn in self-reported meter reading by November 30th of the current year to request credit for unused sewer service. Reimbursement from previous calendar years will not be eligible to receive credit. C, user must make their water meter available for city inspection. D, for meters buried as part of an underground irrigation system, users must comply with section 13.16.040 to prevent backflow.
Is that a motion? So moved?
And now we move to accept, right? After the second reading?
Yeah.
I guess so.
So somebody, I could entertain a motion to approve resolution 2024-02?
So moved.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the question. Counselor Podwigs.
Tim, yes.
Counselor Burns.
Yes.
Counselor Webb.
Yeah.
Counselor Tidy.
Yes.
Counsel, geez, Counselor Valisis.
Yes.
And Counselor Rask. Does it sound like I'm yelling on your end, Greg?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure I was clear this time instead of a parrot.
He's just being very enthusiastic.
You were clear. Okay, so I didn't ask to extend the meeting. We're just gonna turn through this.
I vote no.
So I need a motion to extend the meeting.
I'll move to extend the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Uh, Counselor Podwigs.
Can we discuss? Wait, 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 wait.
There is a motion on the table. We have the ex, the extension findings for U P and we have comments and considerations.
Is there a fire put on here or anything? How long is this?
Are we voting?
Not yet, sir. We're discussing. We're in discussion.
I'm just asking.
Oh, you called for vote.
Can you estimate the amount of time that this continuing action.
20 minutes. 20 minutes, bare minimum.
I have something that's kind of needing me and I.
We'll vote. Let's go.
Tim, yes. Tim, yes.
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Brett?
No.
Yes, that was a no, I think. Right, Greg?
Okay. 13B. ERP, CUP, extension findings.
So on this, just so we're clear, we had, on the C, the CUP findings, when you said, oh, gosh, I can't remember who, which denied, how it denied, which way, but basically the findings that came from Bill Close of the ERPD, you said you would like our lawyer to write these findings and so that is this, that is this document.
I move to approve the findings regarding the extension of cup 16-02 and 16-03 as presented and written by our attorney.
Second.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
On number five.
Number five.
On page 30, it says there is no limitation on the number of extensions which may be granted.
That's our current code.
That's current code.
That is correct.
Okay, so I guess planning is working on that.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, but right now, we can only go with our current code.
Got you.
Oh, Joseph has something on that.
Yes, planning is currently working on reviewing our extension, conditional use permit extension code. My understanding is that even after they revise it and and you guys implement it, it would not affect the, this particular conditional use permit because it was done before the revisions to the code. So it would effectively be grandfathered under the previous and code.
We shouldn't be creating policy for one particular project. No.
No, I don't believe they are.
I'm concerned with, you know, if this goes on and on, that things have changed already for s, in seven years, that, you know, next year, if we have to extend it, is what it's saying.
I don't know if you guys remember the workshop, but our attorney clearly said that the agreement we have with them right now doesn't work because the wordage about the money has changed. So, I mean, the the discussion is a lot different already. Like, it's actually a discussion.
Articulate that in order to issue denial or or support the denial of the.
For the next one, not this one.
We can't just say, yeah, well, stuff's changed.
For the next one, though, not for this one, right?
What I'm saying is, is we can't be vague about what has changed. We need to be specific in our deliberations. This is what's changed. And this is why we're not going to redo it.
Next year.
So.
That's what some of us did.
Whatever the next one, outside of this.
That is possible next year unless they do significant construction and then they don't have to.
It's moved, right, because then they're on this one, correct.
That's not, that's not a contingency.
Uh, yeah, it's in there.
It is.
It says, um, the city's interpretation is, uh.
Doesn't seem like they'd want to.
Number six.
Far without an agreement, though. Like, I would want to put a whole lot of work into something.
It's not contingent on whether there's been substantial construction. So that that thing that.
Because if substantial construction has taken place, then an extension's not.
Then it's still current and it's still good.
Right.
It's only if they haven't, correct, only if they haven't.
That's also a subjective.
Yeah.
That's a subjective term.
That is subjective.
What does that mean? And and I brought that forward at the, at the hearing was, it was like, okay, what what is that? You know, what is that?
Substantial construction.
What is substantial construction?
What is substantial? Yeah, because. Five years, it's been pushing Gores around.
Well, that's on a golf course. That's, maybe that's substantial. I mean, that's, that's subjective and and it's hard to nail and I'm just saying that the keeping the reins on this thing that
in my experience.
Such a loose.
You start with plans before you do construction. So if there's no plans, how could you say, well, I mean, that.
Well, they told us why is, well, whatever. I don't.
Yeah, it does. Let's.
So I have a a question. The one-year extension is approved and runs from June 16th, 2023, so it's already expired, according to this. The very last paragraph before the signature. Shouldn't that be 24?
From 23.
You're right.
Typo.
So it should be 24, correct?
From June 2024.
Right.
Right.
Then it, but it wasn't signed until March 8th of 24.
That was the previous one. Right?
Yeah.
So we just voted on this one in June of this year, not 23, so.
No. We just voted on, we just voted on this one, last one.
We voted and we asked attorneys to come up with a date for the findings and it looks like they've come up with the date of.
16th.
June 16th, but I think 23 is a typo.
I agree with that.
Talking about June 24 to June 25.
Yeah.
Are we certain that both attorneys agreed? That was a big thing, remember? This date was a big thing.
I think if, I think their attorneys made it clear, they didn't care what the date was. They just wanted a date.
Yeah.
And this, this date basically.
Really.
An extra half year.
They either agree to it or they don't agree to it.
Over there, over here, but but.
It would be moot, though, if you have 23 there because. It would be moot, though, if you have 23 there, because.
Correct, well, that's a typo. It's obvious, yeah, it's a typo.
But I, I do want to make it clear, the granting of an extension is not contingent on whether there has been substantial construction of the project. If substantial construction has taken place, a request for an extension is unnecessary. So I don't know what that means, because substantial construction, my guess is if they start building a building, that's considered substantial.
Then you get down to number eight, and it's like, what the hell are we talking about? Construction has not started on this pipeline project as of this date.
Well, and it's not the construction of the project, I mean, this was something, I'm just going to say, is this project is a pipeline. This project is not a clubhouse, it is not.
It's got to be the pump house or the.
But it's not going to take much for that to be a substantial.
Thank you for reminding me.
That's not going to take much for that to be a substantial project.
You think of a freeway, freeway construction, they don't ever build a building once.
Does that mean if we do our water recycling money, that that is, like, that's substantial?
I mean, my guess is if they put a foundation in, start building a building where the pump station is.
But that's not what's.
Substantial.
But that's the weird thing, was is that, that we're talking about two different things. There was the, the property there.
Right.
Or are we talking about the?
We're talking about the property where the pump station is.
And so they could come over here and, and build a tin shack at the pump station.
They said they purchased the property and did some clearing with, for the sudden.
That's not substantial.
We could just.
No, but that's what they said, that's what they, when that question came up, they said, well, we purchased the property and did some.
It's not really.
Preparation for.
Correct.
The project.
Correct. It's not really, I mean, she picked out, she picked out some of the things that the attorney, their attorney said she put in, so, I mean, we could just take out six, if you don't want to, and then, and then.
Well, that's how everyone goes.
It's already, it's already, yeah, it's not like we have to have it.
It's a truism.
Yeah.
But I think that's kind of for us, you know, it's a truism for us, I understand.
Since it's the council that's approving the findings, I believe you could at this time decide what you want to define the substantial construction as, so that way there's no ambiguity about it at the next extension here, if there's another extension hearing.
But it would be, so substantial construction is already codified. It's not, we're not inventing it.
No, it's not.
Well, the term substantial construction is used many times in the past. Right, so we're not.
But it's never been codified is part of the problem, why we have so much ambiguity, because we have.
What, what hasn't been codified is it hasn't been defined.
Yes.
It's in code.
Yes.
So that's the qualification. So the six isn't necessary, doesn't need to be there.
Yeah, but you can't, I don't think you can just remove it, because it's already in our code.
Well, it doesn't need to be.
In the findings.
Doesn't need to be in the findings, you say. It's not like he's removing it from the code, it's just rhetorical saying it on the findings.
That's all I'm saying.
But this does bolster our decision as the property.
I don't know if it bolsters it, it's just, to me, it seems like it's a talking point from their attorney, but I don't think it helps or harms, I mean, I just don't, I think it's kind of like.
Irrelevant.
Irrelevant.
So, so you want us.
Unless we did want to put in this, if we wanted to define what it means, I mean, that's kind of an interesting idea.
Well, so what would we do? Would we say?
Would that be in a findings, though?
Construction.
I don't think that's, no, I don't think that's.
This document.
Construction of pump house.
It's not, no.
I'd say 5% of the plant. Like, if you go through the planning process, you get all the engineering done, you get the plans, that's substantial to me, like, so if you get, like, break ground 5% into this, that's substantial. I don't know how you can do anything substantial till you get the D.
You can't break ground till.
There is definitely something on this, because I remember, it's like 10% off one other time.
So you can't say the plans are.
We're going to look up and see, because, you know, I would bet you money that substantial progress has been defined under ORS in other ways.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
I'm sure that substantial construction has been previously defined, and so we're looking.
And there was something about 10% of the total cost of the.
Yeah.
Project, so there is a, there is a, Joseph, sorry.
So, if I'm remembering correctly, substantial construction has been defined by multiple municipalities and counties, but I don't believe it's defined under state code, and most of the definitions I have seen fall into one of three categories. It is either construction has started with a foundation, 10% of the total cost of the project has been spent, or all applicable permits have been applied for and approved.
And I guess it would, it would depend on what the project is, so it's hard to generalize it and say, you know, if you've done this, then that's substantial, because.
And, and these findings are for this.
Project.
This extension.
This extension.
These findings are because we disagreed with planning and we're justifying our decision.
That's what this is.
And, and as far as, that's all the conversation, like, in that workshop, we established, we have a lot of meat left on the bone. We are, we're not back to square one, they're back to square one, as far as the agreements and stuff.
Right, right.
And that's, was the attorney, that's not me saying that, that was me straight up asking the attorney, if we're spending this money, does that make this agreement null and void? We were told yes, so what we're discussing right now is if these findings are enough to back up our dispute of the planning commission, just to get us the hell out of here as fast as possible.
Uh huh, right.
Okay, well, there's a motion or a second on the table. Do we want to scratch six?
I would just say, approve as written and.
Well, except for the year.
Well.
The year.
Just the findings, I mean, like, I, I, I find it interesting that we get to approve our own findings, you know what I mean?
I think we're responsible for coming up with our own findings, it's, it's a legal process.
What I'm saying is, is interesting that, yeah, that we have two attorneys, they draft these findings for us, and then we say, yep, when they're actually judging our performance, and we get to override their judgment of our performance. That's what that is. Am I wrong?
I, I was kind of thinking it's more like they're taking our findings and making them legalese, and then coming back to us to make sure that they got the intent of what we